At this time, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of the Manatee County School District. If you all please rise for a moment of silence to think about the students at Lakewood Ranch that have tragically lost three of their classmates and to those families that have lost children to these tragedies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one second.
Embracing our differences.
Okay, right now, we have, we are bringing in, yeah, amused, the Manatee High Fidlers. I'm sorry I didn't give you advance notice, but we wanted to make sure, y'all just move down a little bit more so we get everybody in here. Okay. And I hope you got a chance to go outside and listen to these because these are extremely talented students. I've seen them perform on several different occasions and they're always, you know, liven up the room and everybody always enjoys what they do. So to tell us more, I'd like to introduce our curriculum specialist for the visual and performing arts, Julie Abear.
This is my ring. Good evening, Chairman Hopes and Superintendent Saunders and members of the Board. The School District of Manatee County has a longstanding tradition of promoting high-quality arts instruction and achievement in our K-12 schools. We thank you for the opportunity to highlight excellence in our arts programs through arts moments performed by our students prior to school board meetings. This evening, the SDMC Arts Moment was brought to you by the Manatee High School Fidlers. This ensemble, under the direction of Ms. Emily Eskelston, performed for our audience as they entered the building this evening. And the student members are Sam Hackney, Erin Dezerula, Nicole Clark, Morgan Bell, Haley Loop, Eric Gonzalez, Gabrielle Litten, Alyssa Lucor, Annabree Veal, Adrian Wilson, Nicholas Welch, Teddy Bliss, Dean Zampello, Ethan Mata, and Sylvia Hernandez. The Manatee High School Fidlers were formed in 2000, and the purpose of this group is to expose the students to world cultures and to practice life as a professional musician, regularly performing gigs around town. And since the inception, this group has been seen at the UTC Mall, Bishop Planetarium. Last year, they performed for a mariachi gig at Ortega. They did a St. Patrick's Day celebration at Fairlane Acres, and they consistently earned straight superiors at music performance assessments. And this year, they are hoping to have Board approval to attend a national competition in Atlanta called On Stage. So more about that later. So at this time, I'd like to thank the students and Ms. Eskelston for their dedication and their collaborative work ethic and for sharing their talent with us this evening. And we'll do a group photo now, Mr. Barber?
Yes. Do we have any parents here tonight at the film? High school students?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna get a picture with the school board in the background and Superintendent Saunders. Ready? Okay. All right, here we go. One, two, three. One, two. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
So when's the album coming out, or the CD?
The summary.
Now, Mr. Barber, for student celebration, embracing our differences, or is there another thing you slipped in there?
All right. Okay, we're back on schedule. Let's give them a moment just to get in here. And Ms. Abear is also gonna take care of this presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Thank you so much. It's been a long time. Next, it is my privilege to present our outstanding artists and authors whose work was featured in the 2018 Embracing Our Differences exhibit. Please enjoy this brief video with highlights of the exhibit.
Embracing Our Differences is celebrating their 15th anniversary with their annual outdoor art exhibit at Bayfront Park. The organization received over 8,000 entries from 98 countries for this year's exhibit. In honor of their 15th anniversary, 15 of the pieces on display represent a special collection of past artworks. Embracing Our Differences has come a long way in their 15 years, and as Associate Executive Director Sarah Wartheimer says, "It shows in the artwork."
It's evolved so that it's no longer just race, religion, ethnicity. A lot of that is also displayed here, but there are so many different themes. There are a lot of different bullying issues that are being dealt with, body image, mental illness, so many different topics every year that are represented through the art.
And are will be showcased starting today through June 1st.
Thank you. To share a little bit more about this exhibit, it's my pleasure to introduce you to the Education Director with Embracing Our Differences. This is Mrs. Brenna Wilm.
Thank you all so much. This is a big highlight of my year when I'm able to come in front of the school board. Year after year, Manatee County schools, students and teachers are represented in the exhibit and just show the dedication you guys have towards the arts and making our community more inclusive. So thank you guys so much. It was actually almost 8,400 submissions this year, so it's completely blind and judging. So these students are remarkable, and the teachers and the principals are incredible as well. Just a quick note, this year, the exhibit will be shifting. We now will be up mid-January to mid-March, so everybody has the opportunity to continue to submit quotations and artwork by next, it's actually in two weeks, on October 15th. So thank you guys so much.
In addition to the critical work done by Embracing Our Differences, I want to point out that this organization is an outstanding partner in education to our district. Beyond the work that they do to build awareness of inclusiveness and self-esteem through art and words, Embracing Our Differences offers free field trips to all of our schools to visit the exhibit on the Sarasota Bayfront. And in addition to providing the busing for free for this trip, they also promote a special offer they call Make It A Day, where students can spend half the day with their exhibit and then the second half of the day visiting other arts venues to see performances or tour other museums in the area. The School District of Manatee County is truly fortunate to have such an outstanding partner in education. And as Brenna mentioned in the video, the 2018 exhibit received over 8,000 submissions from 95 countries, 48 states, and 227 schools from such distant places as India, Iran, Israel, Vietnam, and South Korea. Of the 30 artworks and quotes selected for the exhibit, four individual students and two group projects had worked selected for feature in the 2018 exhibit from our school district. And this evening, I'm proud to present our 2018 Embracing Our Differences featured artists and authors. Our first recipient is Madeline Boyd, and I think that her quote will be shown on the screen. There she is. So she did the quote for this piece. Our second recipient is Natalia Madrid. And Natalia also did a quote. And our third recipient is Cole Chaney, who did the artwork for this one. And our fourth student is Amber Stringer. And Amber did the quote featured in this piece. And the next was a group project oversaw by teachers from Johnson Middle, Suzanne Gerald, and Jeannie Mendez, and they're accepting on behalf of their entire student body. And this was the work featured. And a final group project from 5th grade students at Braden River Elementary. And a quote also from a student at Johnson Middle, Pooja Patel. And I don't have their names on my paper. Isabel Deal is from Braden River Elementary. And Nylee Molina. And there were three who couldn't be here this evening, and we'll send that to them at their schools. So thank you. And at this time, if there are any teachers or administrators from these schools who would like to join us for a group photo, we invite you forward.
How about any parents here tonight? Go ahead and stand up, and we're gonna, this would be a good time to get a photo. Let me ask you to do something. If we could have the adults step to the outside so the students could be in the middle? Okay? And let me get right back here, and you pointed.
Just move it out of the picture.
Okay, can you all screen in a little bit right there? Okay, ready? Here we go. One, two, three. Okay, Chair. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Let me just announce at this time, if there's anybody here for Hispanic Heritage Month, if you could come forward to the front of the room and just stand behind us here. Board members, as you know, Hispanic Heritage Month is very special to us every single year because of the influence and just the history that the Latino and Hispanic population has had in Manatee County. So to help us celebrate that, I'd like to bring forward our Director of Federal Grants and Programs for the School District, Elena Garcia.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, Superintendent Saunders. Thank you for allowing me the honor to read this proclamation, and thank you to the folks that came and are standing up for our Hispanic community. As you know, Hispanics represent 33% of our student population, and we're growing every day. So in order to recognize, of course, we have this month, September 15th through October 15th, and before the month started, we shared with schools a variety of activities that they could do in the classroom, school-wide items to put on their school morning programs. And of course, many schools are hosting their own Hispanic Heritage events. Just in case you wanted to visit, Blackburn, Samoset, Manatee, Prine, SUG, Ballard, and Moody will all be having events starting tomorrow. With that said, I'll go ahead with the proclamation. Whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize the contributions made by Hispanic and Latino Americans in the United States and celebrate their culture and heritage. And whereas Hispanic Americans have had a profound and positive influence on our country, the state of Florida and Manatee County through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and community service. And whereas generations of Latino Americans have served in America's armed forces and defend liberty and advance democracy around the world. And whereas Hispanic Americans have worked to overcome many challenges, often in the face of discrimination and prejudice, and have successfully embraced the opportunities and the American dream. And whereas, together, we recognize the Latino community in Manatee County, whose willingness to share their heritage and traditions have made our community a better place to live. Whereas nationally, September 15th to October 15th is the focal point for recognizing and celebrating the many achievements of Hispanic Americans and applauding their proud legacy of service and dedication to this country. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the School Board of Manatee County that the 25th day of September 2018 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Megan Johnson, and I am a part of the federal programs and grants teams through Title I.
My name is Jeannie Mendez. I am not only the art teacher at Johnson Middle School, I'm also the ESOL representative and support of the school.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Estes. I'm the ESOL Coordinator for the School District.
Good evening. I'm Susan Maxwell, ESOL Specialist with Federal Programs.
Buenas noches. My name is Maggie Cannell. But really is Maria Magdalena Sunil Dakar Kamosolis de Cannell.
Thank you.
If I could get you all to stand in the center, Elena.
Okay. Can I put my glasses there in case I don't need them?
Here we go. One, two, three. One, two. Great, thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on. This is our last recognition for this evening. And to tell us about this recognition, I'd like to introduce our Community Engagement Specialist, Deborah Perry Gambino.
Good evening, everybody. My pleasure to stand here in front of you. Good evening, Chairman Hopes, Superintendent Saunders, and members of the Board. This evening, Drug Free Manatee, Manatee County's Prevention Coalition, will be presenting the proclamation for Red Ribbon Month. But first, I would like to recognize the Minnesota Elks for their continued partnership with the School District during Red Ribbon Week, which runs from October 23rd through the 31st. The Elks National Drug Awareness Program is one of the largest volunteer programs in the United States, promoting a drug-free America, and we are very grateful for their support. I'd like to introduce at this time, members of the Elks to say a few words. Jack Cantwell, Diane Davis, and Ken Davis, if you'd please join me at the podium.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Cantwell. I'm a past exalted ruler of the Bradenton Elks 1511. I'm also the Vice Chairman for the State of Florida Drug Awareness Education Program. For 149 years, the benevolent and protective order of Elks has been dedicated to serving our communities and our fellow citizens. There are more than 1,900 Elks lodges across the country, with a total membership exceeding 800,000 and growing. As a retired New York City narcotics detective, I have witnessed firsthand the tragic results of the current drug epidemic. Educating our youth about the dangers of using drugs is a fundamental responsibility of our entire society. Addressing the biggest cause of youthful use of drugs, which we believe to be peer pressure, is a critical part of this most worthwhile endeavor. Elks are the largest volunteer drug awareness program in the United States. We're very proud of our dedicated army of volunteers who freely give their time and talents to this most noble cause. The Elks are committed to eliminating the use and abuse of illegal drugs by all members of society and believe that in order to ensure a bright future for our country, it is essential that our children be educated about these dangers and hopefully raised in a drug-free environment. We applaud the participation of the School Board of Manatee County for their participation in this most important and necessary message to the youth of our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Diane Davis. I'm from the Minnesota Lodge, and I am the Lodge Chairman of Drug Awareness.
And I'm Ken Davis. I'm her husband.
Thank you, representatives from the Elks. We just have a little bit more here. During Red Ribbon Week, staff will promote a drug-free environment by wearing red ribbons donated by the Elks Lodges. Schools will engage in numerous activities to promote this year's theme, "Life is Your Journey: Travel Drug-Free." Elroy the Elk will be visiting elementary schools during morning arrival and school announcements, and the Communications Department will be running a PSA on all social media channels throughout the week. Thank you to Elroy and the Elks for their support. At this time, I would like to take a photograph with the Elks and the Board members, and then shortly after that, we'll introduce Ally Bergman, Prevention Director at Drug Free Manatee, to address the Board, after which Vice Chair Gina Messenger will read the Red Ribbon Month proclamation.
Here we go. One, two, three.
Thank you, Chairperson Hopes, School Board members, Superintendent Saunders, and distinguished citizens. It is important to remember and celebrate Kiki Camarena's legacy. Your continued support of the work of coalitions like Drug Free Manatee and organizations like the Elks to reduce and prevent substance abuse while promoting health and wellness does just that, and it helps move the needle for everyone in Manatee County. We know that prevention works. In fact, according to the 2018 Florida Youth Substance Abuse Survey, 30-day use of alcohol by high school students has decreased by more than 16% since 2016. Cigarette use has decreased by more than 27%, and marijuana has decreased by more than 4%. Alcohol is still the number-one drug of choice by youth and adults worldwide, but this downward trend is encouraging, and local students are working to continue this momentum. Southeast High School's Youth in Action Team has chosen underage drinking as their area of focus on campus this year. We encourage everyone here tonight to offer them support in their prevention efforts. The exception to the decrease in substance use among teens in Florida is the use of e-cigarettes or vapes, which has increased by 50% since 2016. The alarming trend has not gone unnoticed by Manatee County teens, and three high school Youth in Action teens, Braden River, Manatee, and Palmetto have chosen to address vaping on campus. They too will need your support as they address this serious issue. Finally, we would like to congratulate Manatee High School teacher Terrace Dunbar on his nomination as the 2018 Red Ribbon Champion of Prevention. Drug Free Manatee will be hosting an awards breakfast fundraiser on October 10th, 2018, at Pier 22 Restaurant in Bradenton. Please join us from 7:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. to celebrate Mr. Dunbar and his fellow nominees. There are opportunities to sponsor a table, or tickets are $25 per person. You can register for this event at www.drugfreemanatee.org or by visiting our Facebook page.
Whereas excessive alcohol consumption accounts for approximately 88,000 deaths per year in the U.S. and is the fourth-leading cause of preventable death, underage drinking costs the citizens of Florida $3.1 billion, and alcohol continues to be a drug of choice for Manatee County youth. And whereas today's marijuana is 30 times stronger than the marijuana of the 1980s, products that contain concentrated marijuana, like wax, hash oil, or dabs, can contain 40 to 90% THC and are known to disrupt adolescent brain development. And whereas 64,000 Americans died in 2016 as a result of drug overdoses, and preliminary data shows that 72,000 Americans died of drug overdoses in 2017. And whereas solving today's complex health and social issues effectively is beyond the purview of any one agency or organization, and working collaboratively represents a key opportunity for communities to create significant improvements in health outcomes. And whereas every dollar spent on substance abuse prevention, $38 are saved in societal costs. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign, not say that three times fast, campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to honor the memory of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Agency officer murdered by a marijuana drug cartel in the line of duty, and also serves as a catalyst to mobilize communities, to educate youth, and encourage participation in substance abuse prevention activities. And whereas we encourage citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, medical, religious, and educational institutions to practice in Manatee County Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition's Red Ribbon Breakfast, honoring champions of prevention event 7:30 a.m., October 10th, 2018, at Pier 22. Now there be it claimed by the School Board of Manatee County that the month of October 1st through 31st, 2018, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Red Ribbon Month, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 25th day of September 2018.
All right, members, we are on approval of the orders of the day. The Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the September 25th, 2018 Agenda, updated September 24, 2018, and posted to the District's website. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any debate or amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, members all in favor of approval of the agenda. Aye. Any opposed? Showing none, show the agenda as amended, adopted. Reports and presentations, Mr. Minor for the Florida School Board Association Board of Directors Leadership Training and Meeting in, what was it, Live Oak?
Live Oak.
Live from Live Oak.
Okay. Thank you. You may recall at the last meeting, I alluded to the fact that some people wanted me to leave town, and I complied with that suggestion the following day. On Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I was up in northern Florida. For those of you who are familiar with northern Florida, and I love it up there myself, I sent my daughter to camp in Camp Dovewood, which is in Swanee County, in a very populous place called O'Brien. They do have one flashing yellow traffic signal there. The portion I went to was northern Swanee County, which for those who are interested in geography, has about 44,000 people in it. And they have a wonderful school board chair by the name Jerry Taylor. And what, it's about 225 miles from here. And at the last meeting, I suggested that probably the meeting would be in the tall building in Live Oak, and I was wrong, and I apologize for that. building in Live Oak, and I was wrong, and I apologize for that. It was, I discovered in a place called Camp Weed. Now, when I first saw the sign that I was going to Camp Weed instead of Live Oak, I thought it was going to be Wild Oak or something. But the name Weed was a little misleading to me. I thought there'd be some hippies out there smoking something I would never have imagined. And it turns out the camp was named after an Episcopal bishop, and I have a lot of Episcopal friends, and I associate them not with weed but with wine. But it turned out that this was a wonderful place. It was kind of like a church camp, and it was rustic, there's no phones, there wasn't any refrigerator, there wasn't, you know, it was very Spartan-like, which added to the atmosphere of getting together and talking about serious things like public education in Florida, which is really the purpose of our getting together in some place where those who come from all over Florida say, "Why are we here?" And why we were here is to think not just for the present moment, for 10 years forward, what we would like to expect of public education, and talk about some of the challenges that all of us throughout the state were encountering in trying to promote a better community, a better state, you know, through public education, and how we might communicate that so that 10 years from now, we might be a better place. How basically we can communicate, sell, if you will, the importance of public education in every community for making a better community, making better children, make it better adults, more responsible communities for the community as a whole. And that was the focus of us. And what we were, I'd like to kind of share something with you that, you know, Jerry was talking about, Jerry Taylor, and he had, every morning he had a kind of a message he'd like to share with us to inspire, and I think it's okay, I'm not violating any, we're not supposed to have prayers and all that stuff. But he talked in terms of, with a religious fervor, and he quoted from this book called the Bible, that in Acts 22, and he talked about Paul grappling with disappointment, fatigue, and sense of failure. And when he was on his way to Spain, and he was sentenced to a serious series of unfortunate events, hostilities, arrests, flogging, prolonged legal battles, and this is what he had to do. That's not the way to travel to Spain, I can assure you. But when he got to Rome, there were people who came out and greeted him and inspired him, and he saw a delegation of brothers and sisters coming to meet him, and they revived him. And he, my friend Jerry, the president of the School Board in Swanee County, would say, "You know, it's kind of like us. You know, we encounter a lot of opposition, you know, to promoting, you know, public education, but we go on and we are inspired by others, and we should lead our lives with that kind of dedication to making our communities and our state a better place." So I hope I'm communicating at least a little bit the idea of getting together for inspiration for making our communities better, you know, through public education, our state better through public education. And that's the message that we need to convey, communicate to the rest of our community, as well as to our legislators, for making a better state. So that's about it. That's the essence. Let me tell you just a little bit about, this Camp Weed is a beautiful place. It's got about 500 acres and a lake, and it's Spartan, as I say, you know, don't think about watching TV or making phone calls or anything, but if you like the outdoors and you like the country, it's a great place to visit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Thank you for representing our board on the Florida School Board Association Board. Members, the leaves, there are only three of them, are in your packet. This time, Vice Chair Messenger for Public Comments.
All right, well, I'll read my typical spiel. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not a forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaints should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. This is a business meeting of the school board, and the public expects that we conduct it in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. And with that, I will start with Katie Pearson and then Gary Taylor. Katie Pearson. Okay, Mr. Taylor? See, I read all that for nothing. Bridget Mendel? And after Bridget Mendel will be Becky Kenees.
Thank you very much. I brought up a few textbooks to share with you this evening that are handed out at Lakewood Ranch. On August 1st, I did a public records request to find out what data fields are being accessed from my boys' Focus Accounts by Bright Bites. I never got an answer back until recently, when the company brochure was sent to me via email, which was not what I was looking for. My concern was that no one really knows the answers, and it made me get more specific with my inquiry. I have since thought it might be wise to find out which data fields are being accessed, how often, and by what third-party vendors are in my boys' Focus Accounts. I've asked to be removed from this program before, and it still hasn't happened. It's gone on three years. Please understand that Bright Bites has access to our children's Focus Accounts from grades K to 20. That company and this district are tracking my boys long after they graduate from Lakewood Ranch High School. You and this third-party vendor make it your business to find out where my boys go to college, what they study, if they graduate, and what job they get, and even their salaries. You use that data to cycle back to compare to the students you find that might be at risk for dropping out. It seems absurd that a company like Bright Bites, with, a company like Bright Bites can determine with 90% accuracy that a child, by the time they reach 4th grade, will drop out of high school. This appears to be nothing more than just a giant data grab. Let's see, then I have, we have a situation with the SCF classes at Lakewood Ranch. Per our contract with them, you must replace our textbooks for dual enrollment classes every three years. There's a reason that we do not offer SCF science classes on our campuses, and that was because the Science Department decided to take them from our district. You can only take them on their campus because they would not tolerate the textbook situation or the curriculum plans and the assessments were not being provided for the SCF to review. SCF has to protect their brand and the rigor of their program. It would be sad to see the English and the history classes pulled from our high schools, but what's happening at Lakewood Ranch High School is unacceptable. ENC 1101 and 1102, no textbooks. U.S. History, no textbooks. Children are actually making their own instructional materials, and they're pretty much using Google to find out any additional information. This right here are the math textbooks that are as old as the school, and there are kids that are missing chunks of these out of the blue, so showed up, but these are published in 1999. So just to let you know, 20 years. So when your textbooks are as old as your school, there's a little problem. In addition, we have water back in Building 2 from the auditorium. When the rains are having, the water table's full. I've shared pictures of the water entering the building, along with the teachers that have found it this summer as well. They were shared with Mr. Henson and Mr. Little. Not only does the water lap up against the apron of the stage, but now we have a cracked roof drain, which is bringing water into the building and right onto center stage, dripping onto the curtains, which have not been cleaned, repaired, or replaced since the building was put up. We also have wiring and lots of standing water and children, and we need to fix that.
Thank you. Ms. Kenees?
Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening and follow up with you on Just for Girls requests for inclusion in the millage funding. I appreciate that you referred our request to the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee. I had an opportunity to attend one of their meetings and review their minutes, and I found it noteworthy to remind you two of the recommendation that was given by the board chairman, that along the way in this process, this new process, we will be discovering new and different things that may require some changes. So it's great to see that that's acknowledged, that we're learning some things that are unfolding while we review these important decisions on behalf of the students. I appreciate your recommendation to go in front of the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee so that we can have an opportunity to comply with the interests of the voters and get this right. And while we have been monitoring the Citizens Advisory Committee and seeing the work that's being done, we can tell that this is a group of very serious people wanting to do the right thing, and we all share that goal, starting with the staff in their interest in referring us to the board, right from the beginning with Dr. Green and Superintendent Saunders both referred us to the board. The Citizens Advisory Committee will review this and make a recommendation to the board, and that board was expressing the need for everyone to wait until they were ready and not get ahead of them. So we're on the right track, we're on the same team, and the decision that we make together will either help or hinder the students that we all care so much about. I'm really grateful to be involved with all of you and part of this process to help these students achieve their full success. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. Members, we are on approval of the minutes. Superintendent Saunders for the approval of the minutes through September 11.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes from September 4, 2018, public hearing for final budget approval, and September 11, 2018, school board workshop and regular meeting.
Okay, having been moved by Mr. Kennedy and seconded by Mr. Cologne, are there any amendments or changes or debate on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes for the school board, the public hearing for final budget approval on September 4, 2018, the board workshop September 11, 2018, and the regular meeting of the school board September 11, 2018. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Hearing none, show the approval of the minutes adopted. Superintendent Saunders for consent items.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for September 25, 2018.
Do I have a second? Okay, having been moved and seconded, is there any debate or comments? Mr. Minor? Nope. All right, I just want to make a note that part of this is approving the Tripspark school bus routing software, which we are actually using now. So, all right, hearing, no debate. Members, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Showing none, show the consent agenda adopted, the consent items adopted. All right, members, on old business, I need a motion to remove from the table the approval of the Charter for the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee Charter.
So moved.
Okay, having been moved, is there a second?
Did you say remove?
Remove from the table, take it from the table so that we can take it up. We take, I think you, we tabled it at the prior meeting. So I need a motion to remove it from the table so we can take it up.
A second.
Okay, having been moved and seconded, is there any debate on the motion to remove from the table the approval of the Charter for the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee? Hearing none, all those in favor of removing from the table the approval of the Charter for the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, showing no opposition. Members, we can now take up under old business the approval of the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee Charter. Mr. Minor, I think you, I'll tell you what, I think, do I have a motion to approve the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee Charter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve a charter for the Citizens Advisory Committee that contains, you know, the text of what has been published and is part of the agenda and is, has at the top Citizens Independent Millage Oversight Committee Charter. This would be the text of the charter regarding the, this committee that's oversight concerning finances.
Okay, if I recall on this issue, so are you referring to a specific one? The committee itself submitted a charter, so I think to put everything in the proper posture, we need a motion to approve the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee Charter in a second, and then we can take it up under debate, and I think that would be the time for you to raise your alternative charter.
No, I would like to do it the way I made the motion, to approve as the charter for this committee what has been included in our agenda as the, and having at the top, and I don't think the title makes that difference, but it's in the documents provided to the public called Citizens Independent Millage Oversight Committee Charter for the School District of Manatee County, Florida. That's my motion.
Okay, your motion fails for lack of a second. Members, do I have a motion?
Mr. Kennedy is about to say so.
I have here a second. Did you second it?
I was still pondering the motion itself. I, I would like to second it. I mean, that was a, that was a pretty quick failure of a motion. I'm, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm kind of thinking through this process, we basically have two documents that we need to, I know Mr. Minor's ideas, let's take Mr. Minor's document and approve that. It doesn't, there's a few, it's, based on my reading, there's only a few minor points of, let's see what I did there, minor points, points that really have to be hashed out, but I don't know what the best way to do that is.
Okay, I would, I would just remind the board.
I would like to second his motion. So we can at least get to discussing it.
Okay, so we can talk about it.
We have a second. Okay, so, members, Mr. Minor has made a motion. Would you restate your motion, Mr. Minor?
Yes, the text of the, you know, charter that pertains to the committee that is appointed by this board, you know, concerning finances, you know, shall be that text contained in a document in the agenda package that has its title Citizens Independent Millage Oversight Committee Charter.
Okay. All right, members, that motion has been made and it's been seconded. We are now on debate. Before we start debate, I would just like to remind the board that we appointed a committee, and one of the things that we asked them to do was to prepare a charter and to bring it to the board. And so Mr. Minor's motion is to take up Mr. Minor's charter for this committee. For debate, Mr. Kennedy, your mic is on?
Sure. It appears to me that the spirit of both documents is very similar. There just seems to be a difference, if I'm reading this right, in the language of the terms for the members, and then obviously the question of the president of the MEA and the president of AFSMI being included. I know there's been some conversation about the president of AFSMI since she's a school district employee, and that's been a, that's been a discussion point, point of debate. So I noticed Mr. Minor, in his draft, has not named those two people by name, but in their title, as president of AFSMI and president of the MEA. So whomever those people may be in the future, they would automatically... So whomever those people may be in the future, they would automatically be members of the Citizens Financial, or as Mr. Minor calls it, the Citizens Independent Millage Oversight Committee.
For the purposes of debate, would, would, would the Board like to have the Chairman of the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee come forward and discuss with us the meeting that he had with his committee members and what they resolved? And maybe we could at least for reference to Mr. Minor's self-proclaimed charter here from, here from the committee that brought forward a recommendation, because it may bring everything into alignment.
Mr. Chair, may I address this, please?
Mr. Minor.
Thank you very much. There have been discussions before by this Board as to who may serve on this Board. Representations were made to our community that there would be an independent Citizens Committee to oversee the millage. That is the representation that we need to fulfill. The draft that's been moved and seconded, you know, for adoption clearly does that. And it clearly does not contain any discrimination against employees. What has been proposed, and we have in our agenda that came from this, this committee, you know, has discrimination treating employees of this district as citizens, second-class citizens. And I define that as people that they consider unworthy of sitting on this committee.
Ms. Minor, may I just correct you? That was not their discussion last week. I will tell you that the discussion last week, the two members that you're referring to, the committee as a whole wants them on the committee. So that's why I thought it would be important, you were not at the meeting, that if you hear them out, I think you will find they came into alignment with what you're trying to accomplish. My only suggestion is that we have a committee of citizen volunteers that have put a tremendous amount of time in serving this Board, and give them the opportunity to discuss where they are with regards to what they are bringing to the Board, and I think you will find that it is very much in alignment with what you're trying to accomplish. But I think it would be fair to the citizen volunteers to hear their proposal rather than usurping the work that they have been doing on a voluntary basis.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, you're not going to throttle me. And I'm, it has in here, um, it says the committee must be independent and not employees of the Manatee County School District. That's what's in the agenda that I have right in front of me right now. And to say that employees of the Manatee County Stu-, School District, or they say, or otherwise, have a continuing conflict of interest with the committee and its work is contrary to what you just represented to this audience and to this district.
Mr. Minor, what, what is in, because this was put on the table, what is in our agenda was what was there a month or so ago before the committee met and addressed your concerns.
Okay, now, so you're telling us what was sent out to the community and what, what before the committee, right, or the Board right now, is not something that is to be considered, you know, by this Board. So that's, I'm glad we cleared that. What, the proposal I have makes it very clear that employees of this district are not barred from being on this committee and in fact are, are given slots. The, the head of AFSMI and the, the head of MEA are given slots on this committee. I haven't seen anything, you know, that's come out of the, this advisory committee that embraced that. Now you're telling me there's something different than what has been told to the community and published in the agenda. Is, is that correct?
I am suggesting that we hear from the Chairman of the committee who had a meeting last week and this was addressed. I think it's for the benefit of the Board to hear from the Chairman of the committee around this issue.
Where is that document? Why, why hasn't that document been provided to the community and to the Board before this meeting?
Let's ask the clerk.
Well, I'm asking you. Why?
This is the document that the committee recommended. The reason that it says must be independent and not employees of the Manatee County School District is because the vote, the motion that was made at the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee was the motion to approve the charter as amended and authorizing the school board attorney to make technical corrections as it relates to the two employees on the committee. That is the motion, which is why nothing has been changed there. But everything else they discussed has been updated.
Thank you, that, that is what I wanted Mr. Minor to hear. It would have been nice to have given the Chairman the opportunity.
It would be nice if the Chair told the community, you know, the truth about what was in here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Members, would you like to hear from the Chairman of the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee?
Yes, please.
I would as well.
Vice Chair Messenger, would you like to hear from the Chairman of our volunteer committee?
Yeah, no, let's have him come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher.
I originally drafted the charter under my understanding of the resolution that was passed. And there were points, I brought it to the Board for approval, but there were points in it that were inconsistent in my understanding that needed to be clarified. So rather than asking you to sign it, I pointed out those differences. One of them was the staggered terms, which you very adeptly cured with an amendment, and I appreciate that. One was the charge of the community, which Miss Messenger made a wonderful suggestion, was solved and is incorporated into these charters. We both liked that. The third was independence, and I drafted the resolution as I understand that it was passed by the voters. I'm not the expert. I think the Board asked Mr. Dai to opine on that and resolve it. And we're happy with that or the Board's resolution. The two members, Ms. Barber and Ms. Howell, have been wonderful contributing members of the committee. We appreciate their attendance, we welcome their input. It has been constructive in every manner. That's all I have to say.
So, so.
We have no problem.
No, they don't. What the, the, what the committee.
We didn't want to change the drafting, Mr. Minor. I didn't try to leave this in here. Mr. Dai was taking care of this point, and rather than me, as a layperson, drafting that language, I thought it better that Mr. Dai addressed it.
Mr. Chair, may I ask Mr. Christopher some questions?
Mr. Minor for questions.
Thank you. There, there has been published in the agenda and available, and in fact, it was distributed at the last meeting, you know, a document that had as a title, and actually Linda Scheich, you know, suggested this as a title for the committee called Citizens Independent Millage Oversight Committee Charter. Did you take time, did you care enough to read this, sir?
I, it's up to the Board.
No, I asked you if you did. Did you read this?
I haven't seen yours.
You didn't take time to read? Well, I'll read part of it, I'm not going to read the whole thing. But it said, "The exclusive mission and authority of the Citizens Independent Millage Oversight Committee," and you call it Finance Committee or the Bob Christopher Committee, I don't care, "is to assist the Manatee County School Board in providing oversight of the receipt and use of public funds generated by the one additional mill of ad valorem taxes approved by the community in the March 2028 referendum, so that the funds are received and allocated consistent with the language and pledges of the referendum." Do you have any problem with that language, Mr. Christopher?
That's all we're working on right now. Does, let me, let me ask you, sir, respectfully, yes, that's fine language.
Okay, thank you.
Does it include, I haven't seen your entire document, so I hate to opine on something I haven't read.
Well, publishing it to the community was not trying to keep it a secret, I can assure you.
No, no, I, and I didn't try to keep our version a secret either.
Well, let me read another paragraph. I want to see if you can agree to what has been proposed and moved.
Mr. Minor, Mr. Minor, I don't think we have to be adversarial when they volunteer.
No, I don't think so either, and I don't think the Chair has to be adversarial.
Then why, what purpose is your adversarial approach to a volunteer?
I'm trying to see what differences there are with Mr. Christopher, if you'll allow me.
Have you read what the committee has in front of us?
I have what has been provided to me in the agenda along with the rest of this community. That's what, I'm not going to badger anybody. I'm sorry, Mr. Christopher, may I?
Mr. Christopher, in all fairness, you do not have to subject yourself to this if you prefer not to.
I haven't had time, I understand.
Okay, maybe we ought to adjourn and allow him the opportunity to.
Okay, Mr. Minor moves that we have a 10-minute recess. Is there any objection to a 10-minute recess?
Okay.
Hearing no objection, we are now in recess.
Okay. I'll get you a copy of this so you can review it and tell me what problems you have. I'll get you a copy of this so you can review it and tell me what problems you have.
Madam Clerk, Clerk, is there a motion before the board?
The motion to approve the charter which text contains the title Citizens Independent Millage Oversight Committee Charter, which was made by Mr. Minor and seconded by Mr. Kennedy, is the current motion.
Thank you. Then I move to amend the motion to strike the language in the Citizens Independent Millage Oversight Committee Charter and replace it with the document I'm showing as packet page 322, which is the recommendation of the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee, which includes the request of Vice Chair Messenger. It has the staggered terms referenced by Mr. Minor corrected for the full 18 members. And in their, and in their motion to approve it, they recommend the board giving authority to the Board's General Counsel and the District's General Counsel to make any technical changes to ensure that the two members that are sitting on the committee representing MEA and the other union continue to serve for the duration of the committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, the motion has been moved and it's been seconded by Mr. Cologne. Is there a debate? Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two, two pieces of Mr. Minor's draft that I would like to pull into the committee's draft.
Okay.
And the first one, everybody's already on the same page about the President of MEA and the President of AFSMI, but this is just a suggestion the board can do what you will. But I would, I would suggest that we take Mr. Minor's texts, and I am grabbing from page two of Mr. Minor's document. And.
It's page three, isn't it?
It's.
Is it back to the first one?
Yeah, no, page, page two of his document. So flip that, flip that over.
This would be page two.
What's the packet page number?
That's, that's Minor's document, page two.
What's the packet page number?
Packet page number is 325.
325, okay. Members, we are on package page number 325 in the board documents.
Okay, and I'm gonna, I'll flip back, but I'll let you know when I go. So Mr. Minor writes, going back, "Membership shall consist of 17 volunteering independent citizens who are residents of Manatee County, appointed by the school board. One of the independent citizens shall be the President of the MEA, and another of the independent citizens shall be President of AFSMI. The remaining 15 shall have, I'm skipping, shall have terms coinciding with the school district's fiscal year, and then five members have one year, five members have two, five members have three," which lines up pretty closely with the committee's terms as well. But if you look at the committee's charter, package page 322, you'll see it says the terms of the committee, the terms of members will coincide with the school district's fiscal year ended June 30, which is the same as Mr. Meyer. The committee has six members, will have an initial term. So I think what we want to do, my suggestion.
It's, it's actually a total of 18 members. It's 18 members to include. That, that correction wasn't made.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's 18 members.
Okay.
With, with a group of, with three groups having staggered terms. So six members, one year, six members, two years, and six members, three years.
Okay. My, my suggestion is that we include Mr. Minor's language about specifically the President of the MEA and the President of AFSMI in.
Okay, so that would.
In the committee membership.
So that would be covered in the authority for the District's General Counsel and the Board's General Counsel to make the technical corrections. The reason why I only, the reason why I think the suggestion was that the attorneys make the technical corrections to ensure that the President of MEA and the President, the President of, of AFSMI continue to serve is because they can do the necessary word-smithing so that we, we mitigate this whole issue of independence that's in the referendum resolution.
Okay. Yeah, I guess.
The intent, the intent is to give the attorneys authority to ensure that those two members continue to serve.
Got it. I, I guess where I'm going a step farther, I'd like to see in the charter those titles mentioned, but I think we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, and I, I, the only thing I would suggest is just to make sure because they, there, there is exemption that allows them to do that, and rather than us come up with the language, I think if we just tell them what the intent is, that the, that those two individuals in those two positions are represented on the committee, and let them work with the language that fits into state statutes providing the exemption for certain collective bargaining entities to participate.
Okay. One more, easy, quick, easy one. On Mr. Minor's versions, again, I'm at packet page, packet page 325, this is the second paragraph, at the very end of the second paragraph, and Mr. Minor includes the phrase, "or for any reason as determined by the school board," and this is in relation to members coming and going from the committee. I think it would be a good idea to add that last clause, "or for any reason as determined by the school board," add that to the end of the composition of the committee paragraph, which is packet page 323. So this would now read, I won't read through the whole thing, but you'll notice that it redlined as Florida sunshine laws, and this is the copy I'm on.
Right.
So leave that redlined, redline out the word "or." So as you're going through these items, and I'll just finish it, "for repetitive failure to adhere to the required responsibilities or standards, standard, standards of conduct expected of a committee member, or for any reason as determined by the school board."
But that's a difference. We didn't understand, we didn't, that we were appointed, but only could be removed for misfeasance or malfeasance. That's a constructive change that the committee's not aware of until.
So, so the, the language, "or repetitive failure to adhere to the required responsibilities or standard of conduct expected of a committee member," the board would be making that decision. And so I, I guess, are you, what are you trying to accomplish?
What I'm trying to accomplish is that the composition of the board is decided by, excuse me, the competition.
Composition.
Composition of the Citizens Financial Advisor Committee is determined by the five members of the school board. So if, if there is an issue, if three members of the school board have an issue with somebody that's on that committee, and it is an issue outside of what is listed in here, that a majority of the school board can still remove somebody from the committee, even if it's for a, you know, even if it's a, whatever the case may be, it, you know, I, I'm trying to think of an example.
That, that would be helpful.
But I think the power should lie with the majority of the board.
That you don't like the color of my eyes, right?
Something that petty, yes.
Well, that's a critical issue with the committee, I can tell you that.
So you.
It's the board's decision, but we understood we were appointed for our term and couldn't be removed except for misfeasance, malfeasance, or failing to attend the meetings. Now, it, the board ultimately is going to decide. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Just a second. Mr. Cologne.
I would just say this. In the past, our constituents, the citizens, have felt that the board has disbanded other citizen groups because they didn't like the answers they came up with. And I think that for us to be able to throw someone off the committee, like a Mr. Nelson, who keeps bringing stuff up to us that we don't really want to hear, but I feel it's important that the board be that independent, and that we'd not be able to just simply remove somebody for saying what we don't want to hear or making it public.
I, I think with regards to this, you know, and we can hear from the attorneys, I mean, basically what you're suggesting, Mr. Kennedy, is this body would not be independent because every decision they make, they run the risk of three board members just saying, you know, "you, you've served us well, but we don't like what you're saying, and we're going to kick you off." I mean, that, I don't know how independent that is if they, because you, and you yourself said, "Yeah, I mean, if I don't like the color of your eyes."
Okay.
I, I know you maybe didn't mean that, but I think, I think you're.
I suggest.
But, but it's my point.
For, that broad, you, you.
That broad, yes, that broad. I mean, I, I see your point, and I'll let the other board member speak to it.
Mr. Um.
Mr. Minor.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Minor.
Since I'm officially gagged, it seems like, can we just table this thing to some other meeting? And then, and hopefully by that time, we will have something in writing that includes, you know, that is what the speaker here believes is the, a, the position of the, of this committee. Okay? And I don't think that what we're talking about, giving it to Mr. Die and rework it, he's, Mr. Die is not a member of the board, and it's, it's up to this committee. If they don't like my proposal, they can go through and say, "We don't like this."
Okay, I believe Mr. Minor has a motion to table this issue. Is there a second?
Okay. Apparently that dies. Can we?
I'll second it. I will second your motion.
Okay.
I will second your motion. Is there any objection to tabling this?
My question is, what, what will really be achieved by tabling this further? I mean, like, kicking the can down, do you know what I mean? Like, what's really going to be achieved by tabling this? That's, that's my real question.
May I respond to that, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Minor for a response to Vice Chair Messenger.
Okay. Nobody likes kicking things down the road more, less than I do. However, we were presented, you know, tonight with something we don't even have before us in terms of, you know, the details of a proposal from the Finance Committee. I tried to, you know, through questions of Mr. Christopher, to find out specifically, you know, what concerns he had about the draft that is before and is part of the agenda. And I was interrupted by the chair, I'm going to say basically gagged by the chair, of going through that process. I would hope I would talk with Mr. Christopher, you know, and I tried to during the recess, ask him to, and that was the purpose of the recess, to go through and say specifically what problems he had. Well, we didn't get very far with that, and so that's the reason, Mr. Messenger, I'm, I'm saying, let's have, let's, let's table this. I'll be happy to talk with Mr. Christopher, and he can say, "Mr. Minor, I agree with you on this. I don't agree with you on that," and then we go forward.
I don't intend to, I can't in good conscience. I wish the two of us could sit down, and I would think we could have resolved it. I have a committee, and they have strong feelings on certain, and I have to respect that committee and their.
Well, you can find out what they agree with and what they don't agree with.
I think I can tell you that right now.
That's, I believe that's what he brought to us.
Well, that, well, that is exactly what I was trying to elicit from you in my questioning and going through, you know, during this recess, but did not.
Well, I'm sorry we couldn't.
Move, move it down the road very much. I do recall you're saying.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher.
You know, that, you know, one thing, I think you flipped to page two, which is one, page 325, and you said that the, the committee shall consist of, and I think you used the term 19, and I think you're.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Okay. Well, I'm saying 19 because it seems like at the last meeting, we approved the addition of two new members. Am I correct on that? And, which I, I thought would make it, you know, up to 19, but maybe I'm wrong. But you think it ought to be 18? I was fine with that.
No, we have 18 members, that's all I know.
Right, it is 18.
I, I didn't recommend any number.
Okay, well, I guess I.
I think that, you know, pretty soon we're going to have a horse that looks like a cowboy.
Yeah. Well, I, I understand that very clearly.
If you wanted to make it dysfunctional, you're getting there real fast.
Maybe we can talk if we're not interrupted by the chair. One of the things that came up with. One, one of the things that's often come up was to have an odd number, you know, to avoid a tie, and that's, that's one reason I said 19. And, but 18, 19, either one is fine with me. What, you know, was mentioned earlier, you know, the language about, you know, rotating, and I don't have, as far as the numbers, if we're talking about 18, it would be six, you know, for each of the categories. I don't have any problem with that, that makes sense to me. See, we're agreeing with a lot of stuff.
As a point of clarification, sir, who determines what terms are which members?
Okay, well.
Want to do that? We're prepared to do it.
Okay, well.
We're going to divide up.
We could get around with that, but we haven't got a charter yet, you know?
Well.
And, but the, the answer to your question is, the board will determine that. The board, the authority is, legal authority is the board, and we.
That's, that's not an issue with us.
And, and I, I think the board would be remiss in not, you know, soliciting, you know, the thoughts of members of the committee if they'd want to, you know, be, you know, for the, you know, for how many years each of them would like to serve initially.
I can't speak for future boards. 18 members gives us no heartburn at all.
Okay.
The members, if the board, this was a big question because it was left void at the last meeting, who, who's going to determine the terms of the members? If it is the board's desire, the board can make that decision. We have no strong feelings about that.
Okay. I think my comments address that. I think one, one of the vagaries that I've seen in other proposals was a definition of independence, and that was an issue early on in committee meetings. There were assertions that if you're an employee of the district, you have a conflict. And I can tell you, I'll represent to you, that Mr. Die and I, you know, spent over an hour and a half examining the statutes and talking with the head of, the executive director of the Ethics Commission, and as far as being an employee, that would not constitute a conflict in his opinion or my opinion.
We're happy.
Okay. And that's why, not, not just, not just for your happiness, not just for your happiness, but for the community's happiness to understand what independent is, what, who are citizens who are independent. And there's a definition in the draft that I have provided, and there wasn't any such definition in anything that I've seen come out of the committee. And I, before we were interrupted by the chair, I was trying to go through paragraph by paragraph to find out if you had a problem with this paragraph or this number, to find out so we could come together.
No.
And that's why I, I am, you know, suggesting that we table this, and this is all in response to Mrs. Messenger's concern.
We accept your definition of independence. We accept your definition of independence. That's the board's decision. I was merely pointing out, the world I live in, if you're negotiating a contract to me, we don't have independence. We have an adversarial relationship.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Well, I'm telling you that I pointed out to the board, I didn't want the board to sign the charter with issues that troubled me without me pointing it out. If the board has resolved the independence, we're totally happy with your answer. It is your answer, though, not ours.
Well, okay. I, I don't understand that. To me, that's a double cross.
No, I'm saying the board has determined those people to not be in conflict with the resolution. That's the board's decision, not ours.
Okay, well, you know, my, my proposal makes it very clear, I think, to the community, to the board, to the committee, you know, what independent is, and it's consistent with the law. I represent that to you.
Yes, sir.
And I, I think that. And I, I think that the community, the board, and, and the committee deserve to have that definition because I, I think that there were claims made, I heard them with my two ears, that there was conflict just because you're an employee, not according to Florida law. And I'm making that real clear here.
No, we questioned it. We questioned it, sir.
You questioned it, and you got the answer that you were wrong. Now...
I, I accept your answer.
Okay, thank you very much. What, and I think that needed to be in writing and in the charter, you know, for, for future...
It's fine, we're happy with it.
Okay, I'm glad we're getting an agreement on a lot of this stuff. And in terms of that, you know, the rotation of the people, what I had in my proposed, except for the, the number, I think we're agreeable on that, too.
Yes, sir.
And I think that in, in terms of meeting at least once a month, and more frequently if the need arises, I think that's agreeable to you all, isn't it?
At least once a month?
Yes, sir.
We don't envision meeting after we get through our things.
Well, I'm sorry, I had it here, at least every other month, and more frequently if the need arises.
Well, we were thinking, probably it might result in quarterly meetings, sir.
Okay, we could change that, quarterly and more frequently if the need arises. That could be changed.
Yes.
I think, we're agreeing on everything.
Yes.
The committee will report to the school board at least quarterly. You're agreeable with that?
We are.
Yeah, the, a majority of the committee members will constitute a quorum. Any problem with that? This isn't in yours.
The, no, I think, I think...
Okay, Mr. Minor, you've had eight minutes.
Well, I'm trying to get an agreement here, not being on the...
I'm just going by our own rules.
Sir, we put a charter on, we said if they're in the quorum, it'll be the, the majority of the people attending the meeting.
So, so, Mr. Minor, you were, you were given more than five minutes debate on the issue of tabling. It was your motion to table this, and then we went off on a discussion. So, members, we are still on Mr. Minor's motion to table this. I seconded it. Are we ready to vote on tabling, or is there more debate? Vice Chair Messenger?
I'm not debating, I want further understanding. That's all I'm trying to achieve here, so that I understand. We're tabling this so that a more formal copy of what has been discussed will be created with the wording that has been discussed, so that we will have something presented to the community that fully reflects what is, has been discussed, what even your committee has said, but isn't in this one yet, all of those things. Is that what I'm understanding?
I, you know, it's, it's hard to say. I can tell you where we, where we stand is, we have an agreement that was approved by their committee for a charter which incorporated much of what Mr. Minor is continuing to discuss and the points that he's trying to make. The, the first issue that Mr. Kennedy raised is addressed with regards to the work that Mr. Minor has done with the General Counsel of the Ethics Commission to ensure that the proper language is in there so that those two representatives, who may or may not be an employee in the future, can continue to serve and be represented on the committee. And that's, that's kind of, that's kind of where, where we are. I mean, the issue of the board not liking the color of someone's eyes and asking them to go off the committee, that, that may be a problem with the committee because the committee felt that they needed the freedom to be independent enough to do their work without worrying about saying the wrong thing or saying something the wrong way, and the board just decided that they don't like the way they said something.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Yes.
Can we, can we just vote on the motion to table? Because we're...
Yes, okay. I think Mr. Kennedy is calling the question. All those in favor?
Because I think that everything you're bringing up is valid, and we should, we should talk it out, but if we're going to table this, let's, which I hope we don't.
I hope we don't either.
Deal with this now.
All those in, everyone, Mr. Kennedy's called the question.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote on this? We're only voting on tabling it. If we think that we can get this resolved, I would like to do it in a reasonable amount of time. So, all those in favor of table, of Mr. Minor's motion to table this yet again to some future date, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Okay, show the motion to table not carried. Members, we are now on the motion to amend Mr. Minor's motion to take up the charter as approved by the committee with the authority to insert the language that apparently Mr. Minor and Mr. Die have worked out to ensure that MEA and AFME presidents are, are represented, with the correction of the correct number of members being eighteen, that is the number of members that we appointed, with, with staggered terms, six members will serve for three years, six will serve for two years, six will serve for one year. The board has the authority to determine who would serve the initial one-year term, the initial two-year term, the initial three-year term. With that, is there any debate on the motion to amend?
That is not my motion, Mr. Chair.
That is my motion that was seconded to amend your motion. So, you have every right to vote against the motion that is on the table, that, that we are taking up. Is there any debate on the, yes, Vice Chair Messenger for debate?
Clarity.
Or clarity?
Not debate. Just so that I fully understand.
My motion was not that, Mr. Chair, that is incorrect. That is, you know, that is just wrong. And my motion was, you know, to prove it with a language that is set forth in the citizen...
I thought Mr. Messenger was speaking, I'm sorry.
Mr. Minor, Ms. Messenger has the chair before.
Okay, well, I, I think you owe an apology to the community and to me for, for misstating what I did. And you need to give it right now, sir.
Mr. Minor, I made a motion to amend your motion, it's a strike-all amendment. That is what we were discussing. Ms. Messenger?
No apologies coming, okay.
Okay. I want to make sure I understand what will be changed from this document, that's what we're discussing.
Okay.
Correct?
All right.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes.
Just want to be all together. Okay, so, my understanding is that the section that says, under composition of committee, that the section that says that committee members must be independent and not employees, that will be changed.
In accordance with the attorney's, correct?
With, with the wordsmithing by the lawyers. Got it. Um, and that the numbers for the terms, that might be edited as well. Is that, so what we're approving tonight is with those changes.
It's the eighteen, correct, the eighteen members. And that was, for some reason, it didn't make it into the packet, but that was correct.
Can I ask you a couple of questions, Mr. Christopher?
Yeah, sure.
How many members were present when this was voted on by your committee, do you know?
Sixteen, I believe.
Okay, so a good amount.
Yes.
And do you remember how the vote went?
The vote was unanimous.
Eleven.
It was...
Eleven to zero.
The vote was eleven to zero.
Yes. So it was eleven members, where there are not sixteen. But it was unanimous, they all approved this.
Yes.
Okay. And here's my other question. You said you had not seen this one. Was this one presented to the, to your committee?
It may have, no, it wasn't. It may have been in tonight's packet, and I failed to read it, I don't know, but, no, I didn't.
I'm not saying you failed to do anything.
No, it was not.
I just want to make sure that this was not presented to the committee.
No.
Okay. Okay. I, I do think that there is some language that's in Mr. Minor's that I think would be beneficial to this one. But I think that most of the changes are not large changes.
Did I, did I mention one point that I think the committee may have problems with? And it may not be a legal point, but I would want to take it back to the committee. And I think Mr. Minor's suggestion is the exclusive charge is the one mill.
I agree with you on that exclusivity.
And that flies in the face of a resolution that this board passed at the previous meeting, which Mr. Kennedy voted for by telephone. I remember the vote. And I, that just seems to fly in the face of the charge, but we fully accept the right of the board to give us any charge beyond the one mill.
Well, and I, I think that's, I agree with you one hundred percent. I think that the board kind of came to consensus that we agree with you on that. So I, I'm not necessarily saying those things.
We welcome that limitation.
Right. And, and so I, I, like I said, I, I think most of the things that I had, for instance, Mr. Minor's mentions, mentions an election of a vice chair. This one does not. I mean, just like, you know, those are kind of superficial things, but those are the kinds of things that, you know, should be in there, I think. But, but here's my thing, I, I don't, I, I do believe in independence. And if it was a unanimous vote, then, you know, I, I can see supporting this. I, I, do I believe that, you know, it could be improved upon, yes, but you look at it every single year? And it might take us years to actually vote on it the first time, by the way we're going right now.
I have a little pride in partnership, but not much.
So, with that, with the understanding that we will change some of those things, and I also, to Mr. Kennedy's point that he wanted to add that singular sentence, you know, I, I see your reasoning for wanting it, but I also see the reasoning for not having it.
Oh, yeah, me too.
Um...
After, after the eye color comment.
Well, you...
It was your comment.
You actually agreed to it.
That was a bad analogy.
He just like threw it, and you just hit it, I don't know.
It was a good one. He came up with the most medialess thing he could think of, and it shot me right down.
You would think he was an attorney, not an accountant.
With sunglasses.
So, with that, I think we probably should leave it out. I mean, for, you know, reasons that I think it could end up becoming something petty and vindictive, that I don't think the members sitting here would intend, but...
I agree.
It could happen in the future.
I withdraw that statement.
So with my understanding that these things will be altered, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with this because I, I do believe, I respect the independence, that, and if, and if it was a unanimous vote, I think that's a valuable...
That was a point discussed.
Piece of information to know.
Yeah, it was not just passed, it, it was discussed.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you. And, and this is an evolving, that they will come back to us with recommended changes to the charter as they have their operating rhythm so that the charter actually conforms with the way in which they, they want to operate, much like the Audit Committee has done. Mr. Kennedy for debate?
I, I just have a couple more suggestions, hopefully they're better than one of my last ones. But I do like Mr. Minor's, granted, we've been calling this the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee since, I think, last fall.
That's kind of in the line, the oversight, we said, we've been calling it financial, but oversight is the word that's in the resolution, that's why they went with oversight.
Right, and I agree we should keep it. I just like Mr. Minor's title, I like Citizens Independent Milage Oversight Committee as opposed to Financial Oversight, because, because I know it's, nobody's going to care, right?
Why not? You know, on these, these little tweaks, a suggestion, only a suggestion, if we can approve this and then let Mr. Christopher take these minor changes back to his committee, give them the opportunity to, to address them and come back to us?
I've got a couple.
Okay.
Go through them. That's one of them. So, I like Mr. Minor's, Mr. Minor's name for the committee as opposed, as opposed to that. A suggestion for the composition paragraph. And I'm, again, I'm on the committee's charter, not Mr. Minor's. Effective, okay, effective May 30, 2018, the commis, committee will consist of, and here's my suggestion, a minimum of nine and a maximum of seventeen members.
Of eighteen, because there's eighteen currently.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, eighteen.
A minimum of nine, okay. Okay, I think that's, I think it's, I think it's a good point. What, what I think from a posture perspective, why don't you go through them? And then I think what we need to do is we need to, yeah, yeah.
The next, Mr. Christopher, this is a question for you on the next piece. Six members will have an initial term of three, six will have a term of two, and six will have an initial term of one year. The question you were asking was that about, will the board decide which individual, individual members have that term, or you as committee members will decide amongst yourselves?
Well, we thought it was left in our, we were, we had the mechanism in to do that, but if the board wishes to make that, we're not, that's not going to be a sticking point.
Okay, no, I, I was just, that was just the point of clar, clarification for me. I, I think you all should handle that on the committee.
The board created it, you have the right to make our...
They were prepared to make a recommendation to us on the, on the terms based on...
Why don't we just do it by lots, just whatever, you know, pick it out of a hat?
Well, I mean, or let, they, the committee can decide themselves, yeah. That was, there's nothing to change in the document, I was just curious.
What we were going to do is circulate them among the committee, their first and second choice, even it out and draw it out of a hat. That's how we were going to do it.
Okay, I have struck my eye color idea, that's, that's gone. And then I would suggest, just to Gina's point, at the end of the first paragraph under administrative, is just that, that the committee will select the chairman and add, and vice chair annually.
Yes.
Which you're already doing, we're just putting it in there.
We did, and we, we agree with that.
Yeah, great, thank you. Mr. Chair, that's all I got.
Okay.
One more question?
No, those are, those are, those are good, those are good, good suggestions. So, from a posture perspective, Mr. Kennedy, I believe, has made a motion to amend, the motion to amend, on packet page 322, the, would be the fourth line of the paragraph under composition of the committee, the committee will consist of a minimum of nine members and a maximum of eighteen members.
Correct.
Okay? And that on packet page 323, under administrative, the last sentence of the first paragraph shall read, the committee will, the committee will select the chairman and vice chairman annually. Do I have a second to Mr. Kennedy's motion to amend the motion to amend?
Aye.
Okay, I have, I have a second and I have a third.
I have one, Mr. Chair, I may have one, one more thought.
Okay.
One of the things that I think would help the committee, bless you, and I know the members have it because Mrs. Scheich showed it to me in her, in her packet, but the, the allocation spreadsheet that we really used to educate our employees and the voters with the specific breakdowns of fifty-one percent is going to go to the MEA group, here is to the penny what fifty-one percent of this projected revenue is. I think, maybe this is too much, but like, actually including that allocations table in the charter, because that, that allegations, that allocations, Mr. Minor, you're not a fan of this idea, I guess? That is really, to me, they're guiding, like, they're, the, the numbers that they are double checking are what is on that allocation spreadsheet. Granted, the total number of tax collected is going to change, but those percentages never will. It's just a thought. If you don't like it, you don't like it, it's no big deal.
Maybe that's, why don't you recommend that to the committee at their next meeting?
I will do that, I will do that.
All right, so I have a second. Is there, hold on, Mr. Christopher, hold on.
Yes, sir.
Is, is there any debate on Mr. Kennedy's motion to amend the motion to amend to include both Vice Chair Messenger's recommendations and Mr. Kennedy's recommendations? No? Members, we are on Mr. Kennedy's motion to amend the motion to amend. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, show the, Mr. Kennedy's motion to amend, the motion to amend has been carried. So, members, we are now on the motion to amend as amended. Is there any further debate on the motion to amend as amended? Hearing none, all those...
Where are we going with this?
Well, let me walk through the process, okay? Members, we are on the motion...
Mr. Chair, should I come back tomorrow sometime so I can speak to, to this?
Mr. Minor, you should allow for the orderly conduct of the meeting.
Yes, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get an orderly chair to handle this meeting.
Members, members, we're on the motion to amend as amended, hearing no further debate. Members all in favor of the motion to amend Mr. Minor's motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And, okay, show, I, my voting thing is, it's messed up. Okay, so, so, members, we are now on Mr. Minor's motion as...
I'm withdrawing my motion.
I think the second has to be withdrawn.
Okay, your motion fails for lack of a second. Members, we are now on Mr. Miners' motion as amended. We have discussed it, we have amended it.
Point of order, point of order.
Is there any further debate?
Point of order from the attorney, can someone making a motion, you know, withdraw it without a second?
Mr. Die?
I need a moment.
Okay.
I'll have to look it up. Mr. Chair. While, while Mr. Die is doing his research, I, the, maybe we've been doing it wrong, but the custom that we've always had on this board is that the secondor must withdraw.
Also withdraw.
The secondor must withdraw first, and then the motion can be withdrawn. But Mr. Die will tell us shortly if that is correct.
Who seconded the motion?
I have to, I have to look and see if there's a, once you've already gone through all this.
I did, actually. I, I originally, Mr. Minor made the original motion, I seconded it.
You withdrawing it?
No, not.
Okay. Now that we've established that.
So to be clear, what we're discussing is the motion that Mr. Minor originally made with his.
His, his, his motion was amended with this.
Right.
Right. With the changes from you and Mr. Kennedy.
After a motion is placed before the assembly, permission from the assembly is required to withdraw or modify it.
Okay, I think that is correct, and I. I think, I think we have an answer. The assembly has to agree to withdraw.
Mr. Kennedy's looked it up on Google.
This is just what, this is just what Wikipedia is telling me, so, you know, take it for what it's worth.
Mr. Chair, a, a motion may be withdrawn if it is withdrawn between the time it is made and, but prior to the time.
It's amended.
The chair restates the motion.
Okay, so that time has passed, that time has passed. All right, members, so, so we are now hearing no further debate.
Could you restate the motion, then?
Madam Clerk, would you read the emotion that was, the motion, Mr. Miners' motion that was amended?
The original motion that.
Mr. Minor would like his, Mr. Minor would like his motion read again.
The motion to approve as the char, as the charter, the text which contains the title of Citizens Independent Millage Financial Committee Charter?
Okay, thank you, having been read now, and what was approved, the amendment that was approved and adopted by this board was an amendment which technically is called a strike-all amendment. It removes all of the language of Mr. Miners' motion and replaces it with the language in packet number 322 and 323 as amended by Mr. Kennedy, which included Ms. Messenger's language. So members, we are now on the motion to adopt the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee inaugural charter. With all, with that, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
Opposed.
Show the charter. Congratulations, Chairman. Your charter has been adopted by a vote of four to one. As I often say, a board should seldom have a unanimous vote, and this is an example of us working through as a board to a conclusion. And my suggestion for members is as you continue to review this and you have suggestions, I recommend that it is, it is, is your prerogative to make suggestions to the chair to take to his committee. We greatly appreciate the work of all the members of your committee.
And we thank you, thank all of the board and even those that oppose contribution to the charter, and we think it's a better document for your suggestions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. All right, members, we are on, does anyone need a break, or are we okay?
Power through.
All right, all right. This motion is from Mr. Kennedy, it's item number two under old business. It is a motion to reconsider approval as per the directives of the school board on July 24th, 2018, the settlement agreement to resolve all grievances pertaining to the best and brightest filed by the Manatee Education Association against the School District of Manatee County for those specific teachers that did not apply, were rated highly effective and had requisite test scores. Mr. Kennedy for your motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members, this is basically just to fix a little bit of a mistake that we made in the motion. This, this is in reference to, forgive me on the date, April 21st, but we did a, excuse me, August 21st, we did, we did two motions to cover the teachers and the APIB ACE grievance. If you remember, the, the first one we did that night was for roughly, we had set aside $50,000 to handle one group of teachers, and then we'd set aside $110,000 for a second group of teachers who, what we were trying to fix there was that teachers in this class may have seen their final evaluation score and, which there may be potentially some problems with, nobody's admitting any guilt here, but we're just recognizing that the situation could be better, and that's what we as a board were, were trying to fix. So during that conversation, again, this is the $110,000 motion, during that conversation, it was, and I went, I went back and watched it when it was, began to realize that there was, there was an issue. And the way the conversation, the conversation kept going between the board members and legal was that in order to be covered under this class of teachers, you had to be highly effective and you had to have the, the high enough SAT or ACT score to qualify for best and brightest. But the very nature of the problem was that these teachers were not found highly effective because of the problem that we identified with the, the 15, 16 evaluation plan. So like what was done for the first group, their, their numbers were rerun, well, I, let me, let me just speak to, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to say something that is not quite right.
So to help out, I think, I think if we do this, you've got a follow-up to this?
Yeah, basically, if you remember, for the $110,000 motion, we had a conversation about we will notify these teachers, and if they can produce the documentation.
Give them 30 days.
We'll give them 30 days. And so what the district did, the superintendent and staff followed our directions as, as exactly as we gave them, to them, the problem was our directions to them were defective because the district did notify a group of teachers who were highly effective and who did have the requisite score and, but those, those people were not the, the people we were trying to reach. We were trying to reach people who were not rated highly effective because that problem with their student growth score had pulled them down below 3.5. So they weren't highly effective, that's the problem, is that they weren't highly effective, and therefore they didn't qualify for best and brightest money. So since, since we as a board have recognized, hey, maybe the district, we could have done this better, let's, to use Dr. Green's words, let's err on the side of the teachers, let's make them whole, and all I want to do with this motion is make sure that we notify the correct group of teachers.
Okay. So what we want to do is we want to reconsider it so that you can amend it? And you have the amended, amended language?
Well, I mean, it's basically what I just said, we, we, let me look at the motion.
Mr. Kennedy, I'll do a pitch.
Yeah, sure, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll work it out with you. Wait, it's a, it's a, you, you.
In all respect, we need to space for them to all.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's, so, 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 members, let me try to explain this. We, Mr. Kennedy, and, and you've made the motion, correct?
I don't think I, I'll, I'll make it now.
Okay.
I move that we reconsider the approval of the directives of the school board.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr.?
Technically, it's a motion to rescind because it's been quite a while since the motion was made.
Correct. Directors, July 24th?
Yes, you'll need to rescind, which, which is just a way of like reconsidering, but later in time, further down the timeline.
You're right, reconsider this for a shorter period of time, I believe, you're, you're correct.
The thing, the thing to be cautious about, that if the motion to rescind passes, then that previous action goes away, so you need to be ready with the, the immediately following motion. So that you don't have a vacuum in what you're doing.
Or, if I'm not mistaken, he can make a motion to amend the motion that was adopted.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest we just do it, Mr. Die's, it's just cleaner that way? We'll just get rid of the previous one and, and just do a new one.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Kennedy has moved to rescind the approval as per the directives of the school board on July 24th, 2018, the settlement agreement to resolve all grievances pertaining to the best and brightest filed by the Manatee Education Association against the School District of Manatee County for those specific teachers that did not apply, were rated highly effective and had requisite test scores. It has been seconded by Vice Chair Messenger is their debate. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of Mr. Kennedy's motion to rescind the approval as per the directives of the school board on July 24th, 2018, the settlement agreement to resolve all grievances pertaining to the best and brightest filed by the Manatee Education Association against the School District of Manatee County for those specific teachers that did not apply, were rated highly effective and had requisite test score. All those in favor of the motion to rescind, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Mr. Kennedy, do you have a, a motion?
I do.
To make?
Okay, and I'm just gonna, I'll, I'll use the same one that we used on July 24th. Approval, motion to appro, motion of, motion to direct, excuse me, motion to direct the superintendent to offer a settlement in the class action grievance regarding 15, 16 teacher evaluation plan not to exceed $110,000.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, having been moved and seconded, is there debate? Mr. Titelbaum?
Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry, I just want to get clarification for your motion, if I may. It would be for those teachers who did not apply, those teachers that have not already been paid. It'd be for those te, you're, you're basically removing highly effective one component of it, if I'm correct.
Right.
So you're taking out the VAM, however, you still have to have the requisite test score.
Correct.
You have to have the professional development, you also have to go ahead and have your supervisor, your principal's evaluation.
And make the application, correct?
Now, the last component, which we had in the previous August 21st motion, was we gave notification, we already sent a letter out, I have a copy of it right here, okay? Asking people to get their requisite test scores in by September 28th for purposes of consideration. So if those factors being out there, I just wanted to let you know where we're coming from, and now the question is where we're going to.
Okay, Superintendent Saunders?
I just want to make sure I understand what, what you're saying. The highly effective needs to be in play with the omission of the VAM, so the, the evaluation of the principal's rating portion has to be highly effective with the test score in the evaluation, et cetera.
Correct, the two pieces.
You're omitting the VAM calculation.
You're just taking the value added, the student growth.
Yeah, VAM, student growth, whatever you want to call it.
Out, but highly effective still has to be out of the other portion of the evaluation with the test score based by DOE as well as the application, et cetera. I just want to make sure we all understand the part you're removing, so we're all speaking the same language.
You're exactly right, and just to clarify, the, you're right, we're, we're taking out the student growth score portion of that formula, which comes up with their evaluation score, so what you're left with, as Mr. Titelbaum said, is the, the teacher's administrator's evaluation, whether it's the principal or an AP, and their professional development plan. So with those two components, if they're 3.5 or higher, they are now highly effective for the sake of the best and brightest.
Ineligible.
Yeah, ineligible, yeah.
For the, okay. Mr. Titelbaum for comment, I guess?
And Mr. Kennedy, you mentioned 15, 16, we're talking about 15, 16 was the VAM, but ultimately we're talking about the best and brightest for 2016, 17.
Yeah, there's that lag in when it's awarded.
Yeah, it's, it's just you said 15, 16, and I don't want that to be a confusion, 16, 17, which is based upon the prior year's VAM, so to speak, so it's 15, 16.
That is correct.
We always look a year back.
Okay.
So for purposes of your motion, I don't want us to make a motion that's a year earlier.
Right.
Okay, for the record.
For the work that was performed during the 15, 16 school year.
Yeah, understood.
Okay.
Now, is there any direct, now, at this point in time, just for clarification, dear APIB ACE teacher, on August 21st, the school district agreed to pay the sum explained below to all APIB ACE teachers who met the following criteria for the 2016, 17 school year. It is said specifically, I want to make sure this language stands, achieved a high, excuse me, achieved a rating of highly effective on the school district instructional personal evaluation system in 2015, 16.
Okay, stop right there, that has to come out, because that's the problem, is that their student growth score pulled them below 3.5.
Now, with that issue, we sent this letter out because part of the original motion was they set, make sure we had a determination by October 1st.
So, so I'm hearing you need to send another letter out? I'm hearing you need to send another letter out.
In that case, for part of your motion, I need to extend the time.
Correct.
So I need clarification, if we have to go through that work again, and again, I'm not saying anything wrong about this, but I just want to make sure I have all the ducks lined up.
Sure.
So you need 30 days, 45 days, Madam Superintendent? 30 days. November 1st.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let's, let's show, let's show his motion to set the date by November 1st. All right, is there any other, Mr. Minor for debate?
Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
I believe the recommendation would be the motion that originally stood with the omission of the student growth part of the evaluation. So the timeline is 30 days, but we're going to make it November 1st, and the dollar amount of the 110 agreed settlement is the portion that will be divvied up amongst the teachers that could qualify. So Michelle, or Mitchell, which one, do you think you can wordsmith that motion and say it?
Oh, yeah.
Properly, so we all are understanding what the motion is exactly?
I would do my very best. Motion before the board is, is a new motion, it is to, it's basically to, for those who did not apply for the best and brightest for the year of 2016, 17.
Wait, got to start over, APIB ACE.
Yeah, read it, read it, I think, I think it's, it's everything except you are excluding the student growth portion of the calculation.
For those, thank you, thank you, Madam Superintendent, okay. Motion before the board is for those, those APIB ACE teachers who did not apply for the best and brightest for the years of 2016, 17, who have achieved highly effective solely in the components of administrator evaluation and professional development, having achieved an SAT or ACT score at the time of the applications that were due for best and brightest for 2016, 17, and who by have the requisite, I think it's 80th percentile, and who will in writing respond to the district with that particular score no later than November 1st.
Making application, making application.
For consideration, making application, will be able to share an amount not to exceed $110,000 that ultimately, depending on those who would qualify, they would, they would have a pot no greater than $110,000.
And not to exceed the state calculated amount for that.
Not to exceed, you got to get there, not to exceed the state calculated amount of $6,816.91, this is state language now, minus payroll and income tax withholdings.
Thank you.
And a letter would be sent out by the district accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Having, having heard the motion reread, the motion has been seconded.
Is that a recommendation for?
Yes, sir, I believe in you.
Any further debate, Mr. Minor? Okay, hearing none, members, all those in favor of Mr. Kennedy's motion that was read, I know I should read it, but I don't have it in front of me, but it's in the record. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? All, any opposed? Hearing none, show the motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Superintendent.
And to our. And to our teachers, we are really, really trying to do these things right, uh, and we appreciate your tolerance, and, uh, please make your application, uh, we want to give you your money. All right, members, we are on new business, these are discussion, these are discussion items pulled from consent, the, the first item that was, uh, removed from consent, uh, I think a couple of us, I know, I know I wanted it, uh, removed, was the approval of the Employee Assistance Program Services through United Behavioral Health, OPTM, uh, which is SDMC number 19 dash 0051 dash KG, not to exceed 150,000 dollars per year, Superintendent, for your recommendation? 115,000?
Yes, I recommend the Employee Assistance Approval Program, SDMC number 19 dash 0051 dash KG, not to exceed 115,000 per year.
Okay, having been moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, members, is there any debate? Okay, uh, the reason why I had asked, uh, for this item, there had been some questions about, uh, outreach of the district to inform our employees of this program, uh, and a, a month or so ago, uh, one of our teachers, I think teacher's Katie Straight spoke to us about the, the, not only the value, but, but the, uh, the benefit that when she was going through a troubling time, she got out of this program, and, and so I, I thought it would be worthy of us discussing it, uh, in light of many of these things that have occurred, uh, you know, whether, uh, you know, the tragedies at, at Lakewood Ranch High School, uh, with those students, or anyone going through divorce, challenging life situations, this, this employee assistant program is, is for you, our staff, our employees' benefit, and I want to encourage anyone who just really just needs to, to talk with someone, to reach out, it's confidential, uh, the services are provided, uh, for you, uh, and as the, the one employee who spoke to us, it, it made a big difference, um, in, in her, in, in her life, and, and I thank, uh, Ms. Straight for, for coming forward and speaking about the program. With that, if there's no further debate, it's been moved and seconded, we are on approval of the Employee Assistance Program Services through United Behavioral Health, SDMC number 19 dash 0051 dash KG, not to exceed 115,000 dollars per year, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Showing none, show the motion carries, uh, Superintendent, on the approval of the tentative district educational facilities plan?
Yes, I recommend approval of the tentative district educational facilities plan.
Members, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Having been moved and seconded, members, we are on the approval of the tentative district educational facilities plan, is there any debate? Uh, Vice Chair Messenger for debate?
Uh, yeah, um, I, I asked for this to get pulled, um, for two reasons, um, the first reason was that I noticed on page 11, um, when they have the funded projects, there is a project, um, listed that is saying it's funded, and it's the SSC airside HVAC renovation, um, but in our capital projects, in our budget, that's not listed, um, and we, when I asked about it, I, I didn't actually get a response until, uh, earlier today.
Oh.
And I asked last week, um, and, and what I'm being told is, you know, there, there, that even though, um, many of the projects that are listed in this facility, uh, document do actually correspond with our budget and our projects listed in our budget, that this one, they decided to instead list it under HVAC, and to me, um, when there's a specific place in our budget that says PSC, and it has a project listed for PSC, that I think that if it's a project of this magnitude, five million dollars, that I truly believe it should have been listed as a specific project in our budget, I don't really have a problem with this, this document, because I feel like this document has the transparency, but then it makes me go, wait a minute, I don't feel like our budget did, and, um, so I just, I really wanted to put that out there, because I, I, I have a problem with that, I don't think, I think they should be able to match, a- a- and, and, and in this document, there were smaller projects that maybe do fit under one of those little categories, and that I get, but this is five million dollars, this is, this is a big ticket item, and to me, that should have been listed under the projects for an SSC project, and it wasn't. Um, and the second thing that I wanted to bring out, um, and, and either discuss, or at least, um, let's think about it in the future, and, and I don't, like I said, I don't have anything, uh, any qualms with this document, um, but it, I, I, I think that what it does say is that there are multiple schools that they expect to be needed in five to 10 years, and one of the questions I asked staff was, what are we doing to plan for that now?
Right.
And the response I got was, I, I'd like to read it to you exactly, if I can find it.
Drum roll?
Must've been pretty bad.
Um, yeah, let me, I'll try to find it, e- essentially, I was told that this is an ongoing process based on development and is coordinated with the Office of Student Planning and enrollment data and, and projected enrollment data, but to me, that, um, oh, and it says that we don't typically secure funding on projects that, that are far out in the capital plan, and I'm not asking to secure the funding now, but I'm asking that we should be planning for it now. Uh, uh, when I came on this board, we were, I was almost asked almost immediately to bond 150 million dollars, and I didn't want to do it then, and I don't know if in five to 10 years I'll be on this board, but I don't want to put someone else in that position if they don't want to do it, and it's not because we don't have the, the, the money to do it, because we've already, no, we, our, our debt is pretty low, and we've got the capabilities with our sales tax to do it, I just, we're spending two years' worth of sales tax money on the bonds we've gotten out, I don't really want to do that in the future if we don't have to, I would rather know, okay, yeah, we know we need a couple schools, okay, we don't know where they're going to be, fine, but we know we're going to have some, I mean, parish is booming, I, uh, we know we're going to need some, and Lakewood Ranch is booming, and now they're expanding further out.
Right.
So, what I wanted to point out was that this plan says, yeah, we're going to need these schools, we acknowledge we're going to need these schools, but no, um, further planning of where that money's going to come from, how are we going to save for it to get there, and it, and we have the income, we should be saving for it, instead of having to bond it later on down the road, because we don't save for it now, um, and so, though those are the two things, like I said, I, I, I don't have any qualms with this actual document, um, just that, you know, the, the things that I've already said.
Thank you, no, those points were very well taken, um, Mr. Cologne?
Oh, I'm sorry, nothing for this.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, sir.
Why are your names on my little computer thing here?
Why did I not take down some?
I mean, I did, I did, I, I, okay, all right, um, Vice Chair Messenger, those points are, are, were very well made, um, a, a couple of points, uh, one is, I guess the question for the superintendent is, with regards to, uh, this, this, the educational facilities plan, which is really, uh, it's, it is kind of like a capital plan, it's a deferred maintenance plan, it's, it's a lot of things rolled into one, how will this document be affected by the contract, uh, that we are, are nearing, uh, uh, bringing to, to the board for the engineer, the engineering firm and the construction firm to advise us on our, our facilities, facility maintenance, capital?
This plan is completed yearly, so it will actually.
Right, this is a state requirement, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, it's a state requirement on DOE's website, um, a lot of the plan is already pre-populated, and it's in a prescribed format, as far as the comprehensive facility assessment, it will completely change our plan.
Right.
For the upcoming years, and as we move into that, we'll, five to 10 years is a, a pretty significant time out to determine how many schools we'll actually have to build, so once we finish our facility assessment, we look at our student projections again, we look at our capital revenue, our sales tax, we can start building our district plan out to be more detailed and more comprehensive, so we do have the intention to do that as we move forward.
Okay, so, um, and just, when, when I was over that area of the state, we, we did planning horizons for new hospital construction and all that, and there's a lot of data that you can rely on to, to plan out those horizons, so I, I think the point is, is, um, I really appreciate the, the work that Vice Chair Messenger did on this, uh, the other thing that I will add, as, as we go through a strategic planning process, it should, that the strategic plan should drive our capital planning, uh, which deals with a lot of the issues that you're addressing, and it's, it's my hope that the, the work that we get from the engineering firm and construction, uh, consultants, that will be going through our entire district and, and looking at facilities, that that data will go into this planning process, both the strategic planning process and a true capital planning process, so as you mentioned, we can carefully look at managing the district's finances, uh, with regards to preparing for these capital expenditures, so we can minimize the amount of bonding or even eliminate bonding, um, and you're, you're very much on target, with that, uh, we do need to be in compliance, I, I do expect that through that work, uh, from the engineers, that we'll end up amending this, uh, with further information, and I think you're right, that, uh, as part of our discussion, our policy, upcoming policy discussion, we should look at setting thresholds so that we don't have this bundling of significant projects, so that they, they can, so that we can monitor these projects, um, and, and not have these large catch-all categories, that's not a good way to, uh, for capital planning, uh, is there any further debate? So, members, uh, we do need to be in compliance, uh, so with that, the motion's been made, it's been carried, we are on the approval of the tentative district educational facilities plan, I expect that staff has taken note to Vice Messenger's, uh, Vice Chair Messenger's concerns, without all that, and all those in favor of approval of the tentative district educational facilities plan, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay, showing none, the motion carries, uh, Superintendent Saunders on item number three?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the appointments, change of assignments, promotions, reappointments, reassignments, resignations, retirements, suspensions, terminations, and transfers.
Have a, uh, motion is moved by Mr. Minor, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, he may beat you to the punch, uh, members, is there any debate? Uh, Vice Chair Messenger?
Okay, I pulled this one to you guys, um, so, when the PeopleSoft implementation came, this HR document started to look different, and slowly, it's been getting back to, I think, how it was pre-PeopleSoft, um, but, once that started to happen, I started looking back at past HR documents, and I noticed that over time, less and less information is on these documents, and for my sake, I feel like, for the board's sake, I, I feel like that we should be aware of the things that are no longer there, and perhaps decide whether we would like those things there, um, and so these are some of the things that I had noticed, um, that have been there and are no longer there, and, um, in the past, and I, and one of these, I think, is highly important because of what we know has happened with, uh, what happened at the last board meeting, when it came down to jobs being posted or not posted.
Yeah.
In the past, and I'm, and I mean years ago, they used to add the posting number for every job, to me, that is highly beneficial, because we will know, yes, it was posted, and we can look back at those posting numbers if we request it, and I, I believe that that would be a beneficial thing to add to this HR document, um, teachers were, um, it said what college they graduated from and what degree they had, and I think in some, for, in some years, I found that even what year they graduated, I think that could be beneficial to us, and it would be beneficial to any parent that wants to look up their teacher and say, oh, this person went to UCF.
National champions.
That's right.
National champions.
That's right.
Point of information, if you don't mind?
Sure.
You, you may not want to put the year they graduated, it goes to, uh, especially for women, to age discrimination issues.
Well, you can graduate college at a different year, and it may not correlate to your age at all, I mean, Dr. Hope just became a doctor, I mean, last year.
For the second time.
Okay, um, sure, I, I.
That's why they're taking high school off.
Okay, well, you know, like I said, I'm throwing these out there, and if you don't like them, you could just throw them back, I'm going to quote Anchorman right there, okay, so, um, so posting numbers, I believe, would be beneficial because of the things we talked about, I would think that the schools that the grad, that teachers graduated from, I think that could be beneficial, um, right now, what we don't have, and what used to be there, is when administrators were, or SAM employees were transferred or promoted, you'd see the mu- dollar amounts changing, and we do not have that information anymore, and I believe that that would be highly beneficial, now, um, staff, uh, got back to me, uh, I think this one might be yesterday or today, and they, um, agree that they think that they could add the transfers and promotions, the changing in dollar amounts, they could add those things, um, and I, and I don't really want to add a whole bunch more work to staff, but to me, adding the posting numbers, I think, would be highly beneficial, because it would speak to us, yes, this job was posted, and I think that that's important for us to know, um, instead of just an internal hire, which is typically, you know, sometimes what we hear, you know, that this would say, hey, no, this was out there, um, so I just want to put that out there, I don't necessarily have a problem with the document as it is today, because I'm throwing these out, things out there now, and as I said, every time I met with Mrs. Saunders, things did improve, because at least we got the document back to what it was prior to PeopleSoft, and I know that that was a whole battle just to get it to that point, but I would, I would like to see more information in the future so that I can make a better decision, and so that I am better informed. Thanks. Thank you.
I mean, y'all can talk, but we already fixed it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, and actually, we have the, uh.
Thanks.
For, the reporter had asked a question, we have the updated out-of-field teacher list in that packet, um, any other comments, debate? All right, members, then, we are now on the approval of the appointments, change of assignments, promotions, reappointments, reassignments, resignations, retirement, suspensions, terminations, and transfers, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay, showing none, show it adopted, members, we are now on new business, non-consent items, approval of Resolution 2018 dash 10, and was this, Mr. Minor, was this your resolution, or?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to explain your resolution?
This is the, excuse me, um, this is a resolution that which was discussed in workshop earlier today at the workshop, and, um, it concerns the renaming of what has been known as the North River High School, uh, to some other name, uh, it's been mentioned by, at the workshop, uh, by a citizen, um, for calling this renaming of this high school as Parish High School, if you can believe that, and, uh, it, the, the purpose of this resolution is to comply with a motion that was made on August 21st, uh, to initiate the process of renaming the high school in accordance with Policy 7320, uh, our policies provide that there should be six months that goes on, um, of deliberation and discussion, uh, with respect to renaming any facilities, uh, you all may recall, there was, uh, at that meeting back in August, um, I believe it was August 21st, that the, um, about rescinding the name, and for technical reasons, we decided not to rescind the policies, because, um, it was easier to achieve what a consensus of the board wanted to do by going through a renaming process, and, uh, I think it was Mr. Kennedy's motion on August 21st, uh, to initiate that process, um, and I don't know, would the board or the chair like me to, I, I'll, I'll read the title of it, "A Resolution of the Manatee County School Board to Provide for a Public Hearing." to Provide for a Public Hearing at a Regular Meeting of the School Board on February 26, 2019, Beginning at or About 5:45 p.m. at 2:15 Manatee Avenue West, Braden, Florida, and at the next scheduled school board meeting thereafter, Should any obstacle arise preventing such a meeting of the school board on February 26, 2019, Whereat the school board will take up for action the issue of rema, renaming the new high school being built in the parish area of Manatee County."
Okay.
Whereas the, and goes on to, whereas the school board has previously named a high school being built in parish area of Manatee County as the North River High School, whereas on August 21, on August 21, the board took notice that there was in the community ongoing involvement, deliberation, discussion, and debate as to the issue of renaming the high school. Whereas the school board policy 7320(c) states in pertinent part that schools renaming and, naming and renaming says, quote, "The name of a new or existing school, once adopted by the board, shall not be considered permanent. However, should the board subsequently initiate or be called upon to consider a name change of an existing previously named school, then in that event, the board shall allow a period of time of not less than six months from said date for community involvement, deliberation, discussion, and debate prior to its taking action. Whereas the school board, whereas the Manatee School Board on August 21, 2018, approved a motion to initiate the process of renaming the high school in accordance with Policy 7320 immediately, whereas the board wishes to provide ample notice to the community as to when the board will be taking action in accordance with Policy 7320. Now therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Manatee County the following. One, notice the school board of Manatee County in accordance with Manatee School Board Policy 7320(c) gives notice that a regular meeting of the school board beginning at or about 5:45 p.m. at 5:25 Manatee Avenue West, Braden, Florida, on February 26, 2019. And at the next scheduled school board meeting thereafter, at the same time and place, should any obstacle arise preventing such a meeting of the school board on February 26, 2019, the board will take up for action renaming the school, the new high school now being built in parish area of Manatee County. Nominations are encouraged to be submitted from the public for naming the new high school by January 29, 2019. Nominations should be in writing and directed to the Community and Press Relations Office, Manatee County School District. They may be mailed or hand-delivered to 215 Manatee Avenue West, Braden, Florida 34205, or electronically sent to the communication, The foregoing, to, the foregoing notice shall be published in the Manatee, in the Braden Herald and displayed on the school district's website. That's number two. Number three, the administration may adopt and implement additional outreach methods intended to provide broad community engagement, period. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the school board of Manatee County, Florida, duly passed and adopted at a public meeting on this 25th day of September, 2018, the school board of Manatee County, Florida, by Scott Hope's chairman, by Cynthia, attested by Cynthia Saunders, superintendent. And the idea is to let the public know quite a ways ahead when there will be a meeting on this issue, and to let the community know that everyone's nomination is, you know, welcome, and to how to submit it, and where to submit it, and, you know, and to be at the meeting, they could submit then. But we're encouraging people in writing to submit their nominations for a new name for this high school. So, that's it here. And I'm moving that the, the board adopt this resolution, you know, this evening. And so, it can proceed with publishing a notice in the Braden Herald.
Okay, have been moved, oh, now, I think Vice Chair Messenger was, yeah.
Oh, no, I didn't. That's okay, he beat me to it. Fair and square.
Mr. Kennedy has seconded. Ms., Vice Chair Messenger for, would you like to start debate, or comments?
If there's no debate, I think it's great. Let's do it.
All right, any debate? I don't think so.
I would like to throw my second.
Stop.
I mean, it is her district, she wants to second it.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
Let the reflect, the record reflect that there was debate and discussion over who would get to second it. We'll show credit to both, but at any rate. All right, those in favor of the approval of Resolution 2018-10, setting the definitive date where the board will take up the issue of renaming the new high school. All in favor, aye. Any opposed? Nay. Aye.
I have to apologize. I forgot that Gretchen Fowler-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But do you, do you, do you have something to add?
Yes, come on up, come on up. I'm sorry, and it was in front of me, I mean, staring me in the face, Gretchen, I apologize. So, we're gonna undo that, we haven't approved it because she may say something that will turn, I, no. No, 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 that's the risk she takes.
I, I have my button.
That's the risk she takes.
Thank you.
Ms. Fowler. You're recognized.
I just wanted to say that I support the resolution, and I thank you for putting forward a process. That's what we were requesting, is something to guide us in what we need to do to have this resolved. And the only thing that I'm going to request is that you have asked for community input. You are here representing the communities that you have requested the input from. Take that into consideration when you put the names forward and you vote when you rate one through three.
Thank you, and I apologize.
Thank you. And in fairness, is there anyone else who would like to make public comment before we go back and revote on this? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. All right, thank you, thank you all. I know this has been a trying process, but we are, we are moving forward and following policy. Number two. Approval of Board Directive directing a change of Daniel Wallace's VAM rating to 3.0. Mr. Minor, I think this was your motion, but I also received a call that, and spoke with Mr. Wallace, who does not want this taken up.
I recommend that I continue meeting with Mr. Wallace to go through the documents provided, and I can give the board an update at the next meeting or prior to my findings.
Mr. Chair, I have no objection to the superintendent's suggestion to just continue this to the next meeting.
Okay, so, are we, we tabling it, or just not taking it up?
Yeah, yeah, table it until the next meeting.
Okay, and I want to thank, you know, everyone for the work that the board's actually done around ensuring that our teachers are treated fairly. And if, if, if there were arbitrary decisions that were made in the past, we're working through them, and this is, this is one, and I really appreciate Mr. Minor's work on this, and Superintendent Saunders. With that, we'll just show this-
Yeah, do we need a second and vote on this table, I think?
Yes.
I don't think there's any.
So, we got a motion, second. Is there any further debate? All those in favor of tabling the approval of Board Directive directing a change of Daniel Wallace's VAM rating to 3.0? All those in favor of tabling it to the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Show the approval tabled. I guess we are on regular meeting agenda request and workshop item request.
I'm next in line to speak here.
Oh, oh, okay.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you may make a motion.
Okay. This is a motion that is not on our agenda. And the reason is, is because some things have changed since the last county commission meeting ended today. In order to protect our students now and into the future, I'd like to make a motion, if the rest of the board doesn't object, that no radio, cellular, or microwave towers be built within a quarter mile of any existing or future schools to be built by this district. I think it's important to protect our students, protect, to protect their health, and I don't think that we should just fold with no community input on these towers. So, that's my motion. I'd like the board to take it up, if it's agreeable, everyone.
Is there a second?
The motion is that no radio, cellular, or microwave towers be built within a quarter mile of any existing or future schools to be built by this district. In other words, if we buy a plot of land and say we're gonna put a school on it, even though the school's not built, we don't want them to put a cellular tower next to it, of course.
Or a radio tower?
Or radio-
I don't, I don't, so, my only comment is, I think there's federal, federal code dealing with cellular towers that, I mean, it's a pow, I, I don't know. But I do believe that there, with regards to cellular tower, there is, I think, federal code.
Do I need a second to get some debate on it, and then we can? Yeah, I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Okay. All right, perhaps we should go to the legal counsel, Mr. Dye.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. First of all, except for property actually owned by the school district, this will be mostly ceremonial or symbolic.
Correct.
Because it's the local government that has the control over where things are located. Secondly, you may want to ask the superintendent, doesn't the school district use radio towers for its own in-house purposes?
Yes.
We do, but the board could set some language or parameters around. We, we do, and we do use the county's interface, but we certainly can put some parameters and guidelines around the distance and location, and the type of frequency and so forth.
Well, maybe it might be more in line that we do an invest-
A workshop, a workshop?
I'd say we could do a workshop on it.
Yeah, why don't we workshop it?
So that we can find out what's harmful and what's not.
Because I, too, am troubled by what the county decided tonight.
I don't like the fact, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I don't like the fact that the county tried to circumvent, and we have the emails that were brought into us at the last meeting, if any of you saw them, that showed that the county was circumventing any community input at all, to put this up. And there was even a suggestion from staff that change the legislation, change the wording, and we never have to go to the community again with this. And to me, that's totally disingenuous.
Thank you, and I appreciate you bringing it up. For those of you that may not know, the, the county, apparently today, the county commission agreed to continue the construction of the radio tower next to Canaan Elementary. And, and I, as I mentioned, I gave, I gave, I made statements as I looked at current literature, which I had not looked at this issue in a couple of decades. The, the current literature out there is pretty scary. In France, because of the concern of, of damage to young developing brains, they do not allow Wi-Fi in preschools in France. And in elementary schools, Wi-Fi has to be turned off when it's not in use to minimize the exposure to radio frequency, you know, effects. So, why don't we put, why don't we have a workshop on it and, and, and collect some data, and look at what other, what other states, what other districts may be doing around it, and, and then see what action we can take given, you know, land use requirements. And it may be that we can add something to Mr. Minor's list of legislation to take to the, to the coalition, so. So, with that, thank you for bringing it up.
In that case, if Mr. Kennedy agrees, we can withdraw the motion and submit it for a workshop.
Okay, show, show the motion withdrawn. Members, we are now on regular meeting agenda request. We have one request for a workshop around radio towers and exposure of, of radio frequency pollution. Any other requests?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
In reference to Mrs. Mendel's public comment earlier, I know we've done one in the past, but maybe just a workshop on textbook, the, the cycle in which we buy textbooks, what requirements come from the state on purchasing. There's been a lot of conversation about, you know, the math and social studies stuff. Mrs. Mendel brought up-
The dual enrollment.
Dual enrollment question, some, you know, maybe workshop sometime.
Okay, no, I think that's-
Regarding textbooks.
Since, since my colleague over here, Mr. Cologne, are the ones that passed the legislation that the school districts now have to pay for those materials and those college credits, we'll be happy to workshop that one. And I'm not happy about the, the, the condition of the books that you shared with us. Any other requests for workshops or agenda items at this time? Okay, hearing no other requests. Mr. Dye for a legal update.
Nothing tonight, Chairman.
That was very efficient. Instructional update. Superintendent, double duty.
Thank you, I, I have a few things today, thank you. I just want to also thank the Manatee High Fiddlers for presenting, even in the bad weather. They did such a great job, it's wonderful for them to come in and, and take care of that for us tonight. Also, in line with that, if you do not have plans this Saturday, we have our All County High School Orchestra Concert at State College of Florida. It's from 6:30 to 8:00. Oh, okay, okay. The doors open at 6:30, but the concert actually begins at 7:00. You're pointing 7:00, Tony, it starts at 7:00. But you can come in at 6:30. So, yes, all of our high schools will be participating there, and we would love to see you attend. And for all of the dads listening, Mr. Lasada, since you're giving me sign language back there, I'm talking to you. Tomorrow is Take Your Dads to School Day. So, we encourage you to stop by your school. It's a statewide initiative from the Florida Department of Education. Food and nutrition will be providing probably Power Donuts and some other wonderful breakfast items. It's free, so we encourage all of you to stop by your, your neighborhood school if you're a dad, and come on in, and we welcome you and hope that you'll make tomorrow one of your stops. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner for the operations update.
Absolutely, thank you. This comes from Dave Zeller. He's our supervisor of infrastructure site support. And this actually has to do with the current print shop equipment, which we've had for 13 years, and we've just recently moved to a new Canon system. The new system has increased speed in the print engine, so we're able to produce more in-house products. All of our printing will be billed now through the paper cut, and bookkeeping will be centralized in one location, so we can use it for all three types of printing, at the print shop, the walk-up, and on desktop. It has the industry-standard black halftones and color impressions. The print shop will now be able to produce thicker workbooks, up to 200 pages, which is a lot of, a lot of printing. It has a high-quality wide format for color posters and signage. We can now do envelopes and letterhead printing. It can, it has the improved business cards printing, so when you look at your print business card, you can see that it's not printed to the edge, and now this one will print it all the way to the edge. It can print event, ticket, production capacities, and it can do thank you cards and invitations. And so, if that's not great, the best part is now you can print from home. So, we're gonna have a setup where all employees can actually print their work to the print shop from home if they're having the large jobs. And we have three employees, a snapshot of the workload. This last two weeks, three employees made 1 million impressions, or copies, as they're referred to. So, they made a million copies in the print shop. The three employees are Carl Martins, Terry Tally, and Jody Rico. And this is just one more example of how the operations is here to support our school system.
Great, thank you. Back to Superintendent Saunders for the superintendent's remarks.
Yes, we opened in, you know, the chair mentioned this earlier, but we certainly want to give our condolences to-
want to give our condolences to the family of Lakewood Ranch High School. No school should have to endure the loss that they have, and for three students to have been impacted is just a tragic situation. One of the things that the board is working on, on behalf of the Powers family, is they requested that we try to do something with the traffic situation, with a light or some initiative, even though it's not directly in our domain. We've worked with our team, Mr. Penley and Amy Anderson, on proposals of what we're going to have the board possibly present to the Department of Transportation. So, on our next board workshop, we will be proposing a couple of options, and then the board will receive a resolution that once they agree upon what they would like to recommend, it will be forwarded to the Department of Transportation for possible immediate changes. We do know that they have a five-year plan to do a roundabout in that area, but we do feel in this community that we need something immediately. There's been enough tragic incidents and accidents and life lost that we, you know, the team is a great group. I sent them the proposal, and they had a number of viable inexpensive options that we can bring to the table. So, that will be coming forward at the request of the Powers family at our next board workshop. And on another note, many of you in the room participated in this, Mike Barber's group were instrumental, but our 28th Annual Business and Education Award Ceremony that was at MTC just really signified the wonderful community that supports us and the business partners that really come out in droves to help our schools. You know, all of us left thinking, wow, we are so blessed to live in such a giving place that really does promote education and support our students. So, you know, they do seem to do it all. We are a village. They are part of our We Manatee process of improving the lives of our students. So, we just thank our partners, thank all that they do to make our schools and our community better, and we're fortunate to be blessed to live in Manatee County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Minor, will you start us off for board member comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think all of our hearts go out to the families with Lakewood Ranch who suffered so many losses. Someone else whose loss to our community, I think, is significant, is Dave Briscoe, who worked very hard to help promote Manatee, you know, high school athletics and was a right-hand person to Rick Wells and his father, and Sheriff Stuvia's information officer with our sheriff's office. I knew him through, you know, Manatee High. I tried to get around to some of the football games, and in the, you know, press box, he was doing his play-by-play just beautifully. I mean, he could, he was a professional at this, and Friday night I was out there. And I just say, Dave, thank you very much, you know, for your great service and my condolences to his family. He was certainly part of our school district community in a very vibrant and vital way. The superintendent mentioned the Chamber of Commerce, you know, business partnership, which is a massive, great event, you know, to involving, you know, broad reaches of our community with a purpose that's achieved of bringing so many people into appreciating, you know, public education and stimulating our students, you know, for their, not just for their careers, but stimulating their characters and building pride in what they I wasn't the greatest athlete in high school and in college, I lettered both, but I think there's a lot of benefit in students being involved with athletics and extracurricular activities. And one of the things that, you know, Manatee has is this honoring athletes from the past, and there was a wonderful dinner this past week, you know, honoring, you know, people going back, you know, many years, championship, you know, games, and I felt proud to be able to be there and be, and sit with, you know, students, former students who were, you know, part of championship soccer teams for Manatee High School. And one was from, came down from Brooklyn, New York, okay, and a couple from other places outside of our area because of their appreciation for what the school district of Manatee County did in providing them the opportunity of participating in athletics and having a great education. I think that was a tribute to those who went on before us, and I felt it was a great privilege to, you know, just be there. What, I think that the strides that this district has made in the last couple of years is something that more and more people in the community are appreciating. We have a long way to go, but I'm, you know, proud to be here and part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Mr. Cologne?
Yeah, I just wanna echo everyone else's thoughts about the children from Lakewood Ranch. I think it's a tragedy. You know, I'm kinda not used to kids driving when they're 15 and 16 that you have down here, because where I'm from, kids don't get to drive like that. And, you know, I'm not blaming the child at all, don't get me wrong. What I blame is the roads were improperly done, and they should have been, because we have a lot of young drivers, and they don't have the experience that adults have. And it's really a tragedy that DOT doesn't get their act more together. You know, I attended the Manatee football game. Mr. Chairman Hopes was there, Mr. Minor came through, as he always does, and, you know, we're gonna miss Dave Briscoe, besides being, you know, Char, as he called him, Rick Wells, I keep calling him Charlie, you know, it's his dad, but, you know, Dave was a great guy, and he did a fabulous job, and, you know, I really appreciate the tradition of football that you have here and the Friday Night Lights, and Manatee is a proud sponsor of that and somebody that, you know, it's a school that you'll always look at along with, you know, some of the other ones. I went to the Palmetto game as well, and Southeast also has interesting games. All our schools have great games. So, and of course now, poor Bay Shore is no longer undefeated, but they were the only undefeated game, team until Friday, so I want to commend them for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Real quick, I just want to thank my board colleagues for your comments today at the county commission meeting. They were all, the three of you who spoke were right on point, and Mr. Hopes, the article you cited, I would like to see, it was interesting information that you presented to the county commission. The tower group did not prevail 5 to 2, but I admire their effort and their organization. I also wanted to just give Gina a quick shout-out. Gina, I really appreciate the preparation and the work you put into these board meetings. You always come prepared and ready to go, and you always come up with good stuff every meeting, and...
Mr. Mendel, what do you expect?
I just wanted to give you a, you know, quick, quick shout-out for your work. You've been a really great board member since you got here, and I appreciate it. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Chair Messenger.
What you don't know is, remember at the last board meeting, he said that if we all cut our pay, that he'd be a Baker of Secour. What you don't know is I paid him to say that. That was very nice of you. Thank you. I feel like that's our job, to read everything and come as prepared as possible. So, thank you. I appreciate that. I really wanted to take just a minute to congratulate the Dumet, Duette community for their recognition of the schoolhouse being placed on the National Register. Watching the plaque get pulled on, put on the building a weekend or two ago was just, being present in moments is always a struggle for me, to be present and go, okay, I need to be present in this moment. And to be present in a moment, that you know that that sign on that building is probably gonna outlast you, you know, that was something really special to be part of. So, that was just, it was just a really nice event. I also wanted to address something. Miss, Mrs. Saunders has been gracious enough and has agreed to put on a couple parent information nights, and it was based on, like, a lot of questions I think Charlie brought up about the curriculum and all the other things that we kind of keep hearing, and, you know, we keep hearing the same things. I'm sure, I think, we hear a lot of it, just because people reach out to us about education stuff. So, she's been kind enough to put out a couple of those events, and it was suggested that if board members would like to come and speak or answer questions, that it get publicly noticed. And I was of the belief that it should be publicly noticed, so that we could all come and speak if we wanted to speak, or answer questions if we wanted to answer questions without the fear of any kind of sunshine violations. But I wanted to put that out there to gain a consensus, 'cause if everyone feels that way, then I would hope that you'd express that to Mrs. Boyes, so that we can publicly notice it. And with that, we've had a...
On those dates, huh?
Yes, October 1st and October 3rd, from 6:00 to 7:00.
Can we have a location?
One's at Gullett and one's at McNeil, I believe. But that's next week, next Monday and next Wednesday. And so, I asked to get publicly noticed, because I think you'll need a week, so I asked yesterday, but then it was suggested that, let's just make sure that other board members are really gonna wanna come and talk, you know. I mean, my goal is just so that parents get answers and information, because the rumor mill is strong in Manatee County, and instead of having a rumor mill, let's have an answer mill and information mill, and that's kind of where I'm at. Yeah, I would like that instead. That's just where, that's what I'd like. So, like I said, Mrs. Saunders has been very gracious about that and is willing to, you know, let's host those and get some answers out there to parents. So, I just wanna put that out there, and like I said, express to Mrs. Boyes if you feel like that you will also wanna be there, so that it can be publicly noticed. And with that, thanks for having a great workshop and a great meeting, and that's it.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues. We continue to do good work and do the people's work, and we work through our issues and we resolve problems. Our community has really suffered far more loss in the past couple of weeks than, than any should, and our hearts and prayers really do go out to, to those families and to the students at Lakewood Ranch that have really suffered, you know, tremendous loss of friends. And so, you know, our hearts are with, with all of them and, and with the parents who no parent should, should lose a child, and especially so close to them having an opportunity to go, go out into the world. Just on another note, there on October 2nd, the University of South Florida system will have a town hall at USF Sarasota Manatee. It's related to the consolidation and kinda like the future of USF here in our community. In addition to that, the board on the 2nd will be attending the Council of Governments meeting on the 2nd. I will make a request that we discuss this issue of these towers while we're all in a room, and I look forward to, to the workshop on that issue, because I think that I have similar new concerns in looking at the current literature, and it goes beyond cell towers, and I think it also gets to the amount of screen time our young children have. And I will just tell you that in looking at this, you know, as an epidemiologist, at looking at the current literature around the effects of radio frequency exposure, you know, is enough for me to really take a different look as, I think, the second graduate of the college, of the first college of public health in the state of Florida. I'm concerned. I'm concerned about what may be occurring to our students and especially our very young students. When I read that a country feels that they have enough data that they do not expose preschoolers to Wi-Fi, that, that should be a wake-up call. And so, with that, I want to assure the public that we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at this, and in our new venture of collaboration with the county commission, what has occurred around the building of this tower right next to one of our elementary schools, and for them, it was a cost factor. I wonder what the cost will be if exposing our very young children to this and exposing unborn children in the homes around that tower is going to produce more students for us that have exceptional needs, what that future cost is. And I heard nothing in looking at the materials that the county commission considered when approving this tower that gave me any impression that anyone had looked at the current scientific literature that now is around the world. And to the members, I'll send you a copy of the paper that I quoted at the county commission meeting today, which was published in July of 2018, and was authored by researchers around the world, including at the University of Albany in Albany, New York. So, with that, again, I wanna thank each of you and really especially Vice Chair Messenger for, for pointing out the way in which we are disclosing and considering rather large capital projects and, and the need to unbundle some of them. So, thank you for good work. You're becoming a finance major.
I paid him to say it, too.
I really appreciate it. And with that, Mr. Kennedy moves. We adjourn. Thank you all.